I would like to call the August fifteenth, twenty twenty four, Wall City Council meeting to order. I would ask Carolyn to please read roll call.
Hoffman.
Here.
Morgan.
Here.
Stan Anderson. Houston.
Here.
Williams.
Here.
Pop.
Here.
Mike Anderson.
Here.
Here. Okay, let us stand and say the pledge of allegiance, please.
Here, you read that for us, please.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, on the nation, on its behalf, in this world, with the teeth of the government.
Carolyn, do we have any order of business for emergencies tonight?
No, none.
And do we have attendance on Zoom?
We will be having the engineer, Tim Hartman, zooming in at some point. He did get the link, but so at some point I'll let him in when he gets on.
Okay, very good. Do I have a motion to adopt this agenda?
Don't move.
Okay.
Second.
Rick has moved and Dan has seconded. All those in favor say aye.
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 Post, motion carries. Does anyone have a conflict of interest that they would like to declare this evening?
Item twenty-one with the D O P maintenance and snow removal. We've got to keep my job. I wonder if I should do it in voting or even not.
Okay, thank you.
And all of the same from line item sixteen.
Okay, so number twenty-one, number sixteen. Thank you, Mike. All right. So at this point, we are at the point on the agenda where we are going to open up for a public hearing on the proposed zoning ordinance. I would like to remind everyone that after Jennifer has given a very brief presentation, because we have new faces in the room, about what has transpired over the last more than a year and over fourteen meetings, what has transferred, transpired, and then we will go into a thirty-minute, limited to two minutes per person, a public comment time.
And Mayor, I'm going to have to quickly point an order. I did send out an email to the council advising on that particular item, the two-minute public comment limitation. That's going to be a problem that we can either just confirm is a three-minute limitation or that people still have the three-minute public comments in general public comment, but this body has never adopted a two-minute limitation.
So you're recommending a three-minute?
I think that's the only thing this body has ever adopted.
Okay, so Jennifer, if you would, please, give us overview of what's been happening here.
So this is the first reading for the zoning ordinance at City Council. This is a requirement by state law for any ordinance that's going to be approved or considered by the council. Most of you probably know, but Jennifer Seeks, my executive director for Black Hills Council Local Governments, we've been contracted by the city to write a new zoning ordinance for the city. So we've worked with the Planning and Zoning Commission for the past sixteen months to develop a new zoning ordinance and a new map. And tonight we'll discuss a little bit about the background of the zoning, of zoning ordinance, the map, and the proposed ordinance that that we're holding a hearing for tonight. The the general purpose of zoning and subdivision ordinances to guide physical development of the community, to realize the goals and objectives of the city's comprehensive plan, to protect property values and increase the quality of life, and to provide for health and safety and general wealth of the community. The main things that a zoning ordinance does, it establishes the different zoning districts, it identifies the physical extent of these districts on a zoning map, it identifies which land uses are allowed in each zoning district, and then it sets forth specific physical requirements under which land uses can be developed. The subdivision ordinance sets forth the process requirements and physical improvements that apply when land is subdivided or platted. This this document says, and surrounding areas, the city doesn't have a one-mile or three-mile jurisdiction, and it doesn't have joint jurisdiction with the county, so that does not apply to this ordinance. The ordinance only covers the city's actual boundaries. And so some of the main sections of the proposed zoning ordinance include the authority administration. This ordinance, if adopted, will repeal the prior ordinance. It designates the authority of the administrative officer, sets forth the authority of the planning and zoning board, or planning and zoning commission, and board of adjustments, sets forth the role of the city council in planning and zoning matters, which are legislative in nature rather than administrative in nature, and it sets forth the purpose, criteria, and process for zoning applications. So it gives the process for conditional uses, variances, and zoning ordinance and then end that amendment. So really, we try to stick with what your current ordinance has as far as things like setbacks, height requirements, rear yard side yard, things like that. We did establish five zoning districts. Your current ordinance, you know, it it says four in one place, and I think it says five in another, but the biggest difference is that we added a highway commercial, and I'll show you on the map where that is. That's really just to accommodate those state requirements that you can't zone medical campus out of your community. In the administrative portion, it explains but does not set forth the land uses and use regulations. And then it explains but does not set forth the development standards such as lot size. Those are handled later on in the ordinance. So the zoning districts that are coming out of this, again, under your current ordinance, you have general lag, general residential, general commercial, and industrial. We've added a highway commercial again because it was determined prior to me coming on board that there's only so, there's only, your town is small enough that there's really only one place in town that campus facilities could meet the setbacks of of state law. So on this map, it's a little small, but the highway commercial is the dark red, so that is the area south on Highway two forty headed down towards the Badlands National Park. There's also discussed, you know, in in these meetings, and I believe in your comprehensive plan update process, that the area along the service road could also be or would be desirable for highway commercial development, and then that could extend south. It's currently, the zoning map currently, that's how it's zoned. The other areas add because it hasn't been platted, is what I understand. Nonconforming uses, obviously, if this replaces the previous ordinance, there's going to be places, and again, we didn't change too much with setbacks, rear yard side yard, things like that. So hopefully, there's not a lot of nonconforming uses, but if if there are, there usually are, those are grandfathered in. And if alterations of the nonconforming uses or buildings, they would, they would have to comply with this ordinance setback, density, height requirements, et cetera. And again, nonconforming uses, if damaged by an act of God or to more than fifty percent of the value, they wouldn't be able to be restored. They would have to, they'd have to meet the new ordinance requirement. These violations and penalties, that did not change, so that won't be addressed. So that's really kind of the gist of why we're doing your work here and part of the law. The planning commission has spent a significant amount of time developing the ordinance, and it's giving us first reading tonight.
And the majority of the previous ordinance was actually produced in nineteen eighty, so, and then just added to over time. And so what Jennifer has pulled together for us has been taking an enormous amount of work, and she's done an excellent job, comes to us with seventeen years of experience and highly recommended and has a very credible standing in the state of South Dakota. So with that being said, then, and I'm sorry, I'm so short, Ms. Trask, I don't know when you sent that out. I left the house at four-thirty, and I did not see that email come in. What time might have you sent that?
I sent it shortly before I left my office.
Okay, and that would be about
Five.
Five o'clock. Okay, so that's why I missed it. I'm sorry. Then I wasn't more on top of that?
Okay, um, yeah, I can, I can read it aloud.
No, it's just fine. Thank you.
Yeah, I just, there's a constitutional problem, one, with the two-minute limitation, and two, this council has never adopted a two-minute limitation on specific subjects.
Thank you.
It's only ever adopted a three-minute, so I have a concern about that.
Okay, very good. Thank you. And I'm just trying to make sure I wasn't short with you. I didn't mean to be that, but I am kind of looking at that clock. So with that being said, then, and with Stephanie's suggestion that we need to use three minutes per person, but thirty minutes is going to be our max, and Jim, Coats, is he still here?
And Mayor, I I have to call you on that one, too. What basis are you basing the thirty-minute limitation on public hearing?
Well, probably to avoid a three or four-hour limit.
We don't, we don't have the authority to, if if eighteen people want to make comment and fifteen people are only able to, we don't have the authority to tell the three people they can.
Okay, well, we got about sixteen people here, so, okay. So if we're here a little bit later, I apologize to those that are down the agenda, then. I was trying to move it.
Of a public here.
Okay, well, thank you so much, Ms. Trask, keeping us on our toes all the time. Okay, so Jim, then, I think you, we promised you you'd be first on the agenda here, and three minutes, and Dan, are you going to be our timer here?
I'm Jim Coats, family-owned, the cactus still burned down. Liberty and justice for all. I just want to tell you guys a story. I went to Colorado fifteen years ago, and I paid two hundred thousand dollars in licensing fees. Ended up losing the licenses for inactivity on a ladder got taken down in my building, in my building without permission by Reina. We had an inspection. And after the inspection, I was found I wasn't grandfathered in just to put up a new stairway, so it changed the whole ordinance, which set a clock running. And the clock ran, and the clock ran out. I didn't make a partner in time, and there's a wide story going in there, but I just, I I invested a million dollars, we'll say, in time and money and effort, and thirteen years of my life, and my kids' future, and my family's future down there. And I came back to South Dakota with my tail between my legs and not a nickel in my pocket. And I tried to get back on track and get back to work and get things back up to par. Well, in two thousand twenty, as we all know, there was a botched marijuana law in the state that passed for recreation, okay? And I had partners lined up for businesses in the recreational area, which immediately were shut down. I've been put through financial hardship through this whole process, and I'm fighting for people's freedom and rights in a country that was founded on freedom, liberty, and justice. And now I've come to the town where I was raised. My family's had business here for eighty years, were in hardship. And the council made a decision to only have one marijuana license, and they've decided that it would not be, well, not yet, it hasn't been decided, but I feel like I've been having a hard time conveying these messages to the council. And I just would like to say, in the spirit of free competition, you know, I have a building up there, and we're all waiting on a new law. The law will pass, the law will not pass. I just, I I warn against, you know, we're hindering competition, and I feel like prejudice, I feel like there's been prejudice against marijuana smokers, you know, not just here in this town, but like throughout the whole country. And certain people have paid for that, and, you know, certain people stand up for rights. And I I I'm one of these people. I stand up for freedom. And, you know, the health and the safety, I could debate you guys all night long on the health and safety of the community. We're talking about marijuana. You know, I've had thirty friends buried in the last five years from alcohol, and we've expanded those licenses.
I'm sorry.
As many as we want in this town. And I'm just, I'm, and I I just want to say, I feel like it's not been a fair process, and I feel like there is prejudice.
And you would like to see more marijuana licenses, is that?
Well, I just would like to see less prejudice.
Okay.
And and free competition, I mean, why are we hindering right away, and we're just saying, no grows? I mean, what if a ten-million-dollar guy comes in here with a grow operation?
I I appreciate your comment. I think I hear what you say, and if we can move to another person, please.
Of course.
Thank you, Jim.
Thanks for letting me speak.
Absolutely. Okay, is there another person that would like to make public comments? Regarding the ordinance?
Hi, I'm Jerry Booney. I have the part story now. I just had a couple of questions. The, what we're doing with planning zoning now basically puts us in line with the state or the way it's supposed to be, right?
Yes.
What?
The way that the
Draft or proposed draft aligns with what is typical for
Municipality.
Yes.
Okay, and then as, as far as that goes, the whole, every part has to be written out in longhand. Doesn't really work in legal work, is the way that I understand it, because that's why you have legal, that's why you have lawyers, is you say it one way, I see it another way, and we find out who's the right one. I mean, that's kind of, well, what I'm talking about is all the amendments to this thing that's been going on for how many months, huh?
Ten to the
Yeah.
Yeah.
You know what I'm saying?
When you're working through a draft ordinance, we start with, you may say, a basic draft that meets state law, but has to conform to what your community needs.
Feels like we need, yeah. Okay, okay, that was the story. And then the other thing is, is we have planning and zoning, and we have the administrative lady.
Administrative official.
Right, now you take a building permit to her first.
Yes, that's the way typical process.
Right, and then she gives it the air name, but it's all of all everything, then it just goes, it even bypasses, it goes to the city council then, right?
If you, if you write an ordinance and you're following your ordinance,
Yes, that's right.
You should have permitted.
That's what I mean.
It's in the correct zone, and it meets all the setbacks, the permit is issued.
Right.
Standard process for planning and zoning.
Right, and so, yeah, that was what I wanted to know. And then the other thing was, planning and zoning, then we have the city council. One's administrative, one is legislative, right?
Correct, except when your city council acts as the board of adjustment.
Right.
That's an administrative.
Right, but I mean, where I was going with this, and I've had people ask me, how can you have, be on both? This is how, this is how they look at it. How can you have people in the city council planning and zoning, and then have them on the city council at the same time? Because they're not going to change their vote. I mean, if they're going to say yea in the planning and zoning, they're going to do the same thing in the city council. You know, and is that not a conflict of interest?
In a, in, it's typically two completely separate boards, so the planning and zoning acts completely alone or apart from your, your city council or your board of adjustments.
Because you were talking about taking off the hat for the city council and putting on for planning, so.
No, I was talking about city council and board adjustments, because those two boards are exactly the same. There's no different members. Where we're planning and zoning, your current ordinance allows for up to two city council members to be appointed to your planning commission. That is not standard. That's not the original language that I included, but that was what was requested out of your planning and zoning.
Right, and and that's been mentioned as a concern. That that was where it was going with that, is whether that, if you're on both of them, it it seems kind of low.
I think, and Rick had contributed to this, and I think maybe Gordy or one of the others, it allows you to appoint two city council members, but you don't have to, and I think your city is likely better served if you have two completely separate.
Okay, that answers my questions.
Thank you, Jerry. Hey, would anyone else have any public comments at this point in time that they'd like to make?
Mayor, I just have one quick question. So trying to, can you guys hear me?
I can't. Yeah, you're kind of smashed in there.
Yeah, and my question is, in Echo Valley, we do have some covenants on our property. And if this person, administrative, you know, officer approves whatever, building permit or whatever, how do we know that that fits into our covenants from a, you know, size, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera? I mean, I don't know how, well, does this supersede all of that as well, so that we, our covenants are void?
Are your covenants set by an H O A or the city?
I think they actually were filed with the city, weren't they?
We were given a copy, but it's by H O A, the ownership property before they
So that's my question.
So why would you ask a question?
Covenant, covenants aren't typically part of the zoning ordinance, and the reason for that is your zoning ordinance should be able to be applied to the zone as it's written. You know, the whole, when you're administering a zoning ordinance, that you don't have to approve a variance for every single building permit that comes through, you're unique. You know, for example, your central commercial district on Main Street is unique in that there's shared, shared walls, no side yard, things like that, so, which that is addressed. We took that directly from your existing ordinance, although it's your existing ordinance does not agree with itself in many different ways. I mean, as we read through it, we saw that it, it conflicts with itself a lot, and I think that's because, as Mary said at the beginning of the process, you've adopted things, maybe had different authors or writers, and when they write something, they don't go through the entire ordinance to see if it is going to conflict with other things that are there. So you have a lot of conflicting things within your existing ordinance. Again, that's why we went through, since the book ordinance, and set them up side by side, line by line, and the, the planning commission decided which language they're going to use.
Had total input on that. Okay, this is a great question, though, and Gordy, I would hope that you would take your covenants and lay those beside those ordinances and and compare them. I don't recall seeing lot sizes, and I hope the developers kept that in mind as they developed that out there.
There's certain side of the politics and things like that, and certain required.
I'll try to find that copy. I have a copy of those coming. I'm interested, that causes me to ask, I mean, to like, no, like to know.
Are they currently placed? Are they in your ordinances?
No.
We've just only been given a copy of them, just to share with us. They were never adopted by the council as official part of
What they wrote up. Ms. Mr. Hay, would you like to?
Yeah, just to your question, it would, the covenants are not enforced by the jurisdiction. They're enforced by the H O A. Each lot owner has the authority to bring an action against somebody who's violated it in the, in the neighborhood, but has known the city ordinance. And one way to look at it is, if you're inside the H O A, this more, the more stringent requirement will rule. In other words, the H O A cannot, cannot reduce setbacks that are already required by the city. It can't reduce those. Or it can require a greater setbacks, and giving each party, each lot owner, an ability to bring action if they, or the H O A's sake, if it violates those, those covenants. So they're very, very subtle.
Oh, I, I get that. I I was just kind of curious how we would find out if it's, you know, by the time it gets approved, it may be too late for us to even know that it happened under this, the way this is written.
Oh, that they may be in conflict with your H O A rules?
Yes.
If it is, and these are more stringent, these would control.
But if the H O A ones are more stringent?
Then you
And we would need to know somehow that those things were filed with the administrative officer.
Yeah, but they, they tell us, get, uh, they can get filed with the legislature deeds office, so that it attaches to each and every flat and block that is produced abroad, created in that, in that legal script. And then by virtue of taking deed each and every time, that new owner is bound, we even, ever seen the covenants. They're bound by those covenants. So it's, it was important, that would be great.
That is, no, I agree with you a hundred percent. I was just
Great point, Gordy. I I really do. I want to go back and find those and lay those beside this and see. Good point. Is there anyone else then that would like, Eric?
Evening. So I have a question for the lady that's been setting this up, and I'm I'm quite curious about a percentage of communities in South Dakota that are set up with the zoning administrator, planning and zoning board, and adjustment board.
Anybody who has planning and zoning in South Dakota has to have those three arms, because that is planning and zoning. So if they don't, and they're not doing those things, they're breaking the law.
So you would say a hundred percent of the communities?
If they have, if they have planning and zoning.
Okay, so all the communities that are large enough to have planning and zoning?
Yes.
They are going to be set up this way?
Many municipalities in the state that don't have any planning.
Sure, sure. So of communities that are large enough to be set up with, with a planning and zoning set up this way, the ordinance that you guys have drawn up through the book, through the various meetings that you've had, is that pretty generic for most planning and zonings? Other than, obviously, there's going to be certain things written differently.
You're talking about administrative processes?
I'm just, I'm just talking about the, the ordinance that you're presenting, the zoning, I mean, is that pretty generic?
Every zone is unique. In any zoning ordinance, your zones are unique because the layout of your community is unique.
Sure.
Your permitted and conditional uses are unique based on what you will tolerate, what you will allow, what you want in your community, and what you don't. So the actual zones and what is your permitted and conditional uses, those are unique to law South Dakota. Your administrative processes, most of those are set by state law. State law dictates what, if you're going to have planning and zoning, what you're required to do with that. Now, there's a lot of gray area in state law, but one of the things that is true is you do have to have things like, for example, in your current ordinance, you mentioned that you have a zoning, it it mentions a zoning official or a zoning administrator, but there is nowhere in there that it defines what the duties of that person are. I think the reason it's mentioned in your existing ordinance is because it was copied and pasted from where, somewhere, and you don't actually have
I guess, I guess what I'm trying to get at is, is there anything that is extraordinarily different in this ordinance than any other area that would have planning and zoning?
Not in, not in administrative
Okay, just, just in a general
That's going to be
So, so what is being asked of the city to pass is a pretty normal, other than the few notes that they have pertaining to the city of wall?
Yes.
So there's no big surprise, scary, anything in the ordinance?
No, we changed that because the city wall has administered their zoning different, and not even according to their existing zoning document, but just in their own manner. And so we wrote it the way you were doing it, because that's what the zoning commission kind of wanted to stick with what they knew. But when I pointed out the the reasons why that doesn't work, we ended up switching it back to what I would call a typical planning and zoning process. Again, to ensure that the, the power for the big decisions stands with the city council acting as the board of judgment versus being placed on the planning and zoning commission.
So this would, in essence, bring the city wall into operating the same way as any other place that has planning and zoning?
Pretty darn close, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Eric. Thank you.
Well, that's interesting.
Do we have anyone else that would like to make public comments at this time? Carol.
Carol, it's time to be a kid. I just found this out just this minute.
I just found this out just this minute. Our existing ordinance, the old one, had, in number seventeen, the very last statement in there permitted us to have cannabis before they even started working on this new one that was there. And we can have it grown right next door to us.
Not grown, so. You can have dispensaries in residential areas under your current ordinance.
And everybody here has been talking about they don't want it in my neighborhood. I don't want it next door to me. And it's been there all the time. So what is the big fight about? It's always been there.
Was that the twenty twenty-one, I believe?
Yes. So what I'm trying to understand is you're fighting over something that was, has always been there. You don't want it next door. You don't want it down the street. You don't want it across from the school. It's always had permission to do that.
Since twenty-one, nineteen thirty, twenty twenty-one. We have, we have to, we have to be able to have a dispensary in the wall by state law.
Yes, but you don't have to have it in a residential area. You can have it in a commercial area.
You are correct that our, our current zoning already accommodated for medical dispensaries.
Yes. I think the issue is that it's a, a use permitted upon review in residential. So if you're administering your current ordinance, you know, as it's written, that's a permitted use in a residential area, and I don't.
In the current one?
In your current ordinance.
And I don't think people. I'm just going by people that talk in the neighborhood. They're always talking, you know, and I'm thinking. You don't even know what's going on because you don't read anything. You've got to get to the basics and find out what's going on instead of just fussing about it. The same with this ordinance. You didn't understand what she was telling you all the time. All you have to do is take the big words out, just explain to them that we've got to do it in a certain way, one step, two steps. If it doesn't work the first time you do, the second step. If you can't agree then, the top one is going to tell you what you're going to do, whether you like it or not. So you've got to get out there and you've got to find out what's going on. Am I not right there?
Thank you, Carol.
Thank you very much for letting me spout.
Appreciate you being here.
Jennifer, how, with the cities that you've worked with, with, with doing the ordinances and working through some of that, how often do you work with the city's attorneys just to make sure that, not that you don't know what you're, but just so that the, the city attorney can?
Typically, we don't specifically communicate, like, it's the city's job to send the draft or recommend their attorney's review. We don't do that because we don't ever want to incur legal fees for a city. But if I'm, if I'm working back and forth, I would need the city to give me the authority.
You only make, make it if they're needed or add.
Right. So again, I wouldn't want to just be calling your city attorney every day and incur, and racking up these bills, and then you're going to be like, why did, why did we get this big old bill? If you didn't give me the, if you didn't give me the directive to call them. So typically, the way we do it is, we say, here, again, make sure your city attorney reviews it for approval. But again, we, we would only do that after we feel like we're confident in the draft that's come out of the planning commission, because you don't want to have them review drafts that are constantly changing. As Linda pointed out earlier, there were multiple drafts, and it was changing each time we met. Each time we met, the planning commission would give more direction, more input, and decide. So you wouldn't want them reviewing it and then, oh, wait, that's an old draft. Here's the next draft. That's a waste of the city.
Yeah, and that, that was kind of my thought was, you know, there can be a, a lot of confusion. There can be something that's overseen where an attorney can say, no, it's actually right here. You know, we don't need that, that, you know what I mean? So I was just wondering, you know, to, were you aware at any time, or did you make any recommendation that the commission present that to the city attorney or?
I think I've said that several times in meetings, that, you know, obviously, I'm not an attorney, so it is the, the city's job to make sure that, you know, that they get it to their city attorney, you know, if they're not comfortable with reviewing it themselves.
Which may have saved you a lot of time up to this point, even, correct?
I think so.
No.
It may have saved you a lot of time and changes that you've already had to make to the current documents?
Yeah, I mean, so, so I guess I don't know, again, I really typically don't recommend that a planning commission send every draft.
Right.
Because your attorney then is wasting their time reviewing something that isn't even a proposed draft.
Right.
So typically, always the process with our offices, yes, we recommend that the city council have their city attorney review it, but we wait until we're confident in the draft that's coming out of the planning commission. So we take all of the requests for changes from the planning commission, make those changes, and have, I would say, a proposed draft before we would recommend that you send it to your city attorney.
So in your opinion, with the meeting that took place before this one, does it seem like this is ready to go to, to our attorney to, to take a look at? Or do you think there's still stuff that, to me, it seems like there's still a lot of conversation and clarity that needs to be looked at?
So I would hope that your city attorney would have predicted in the last two weeks, I mean, when we, but if, if she wasn't given the directive by the city council to do that, I don't know how she would have known to do that.
Sure.
So.
For the record, this being the purported first reading of the proposed ordinance, the city has never sent me any draft. It is very concerning as the city attorney that this is on for first reading and public hearing, and it has never once been sent to me in any form.
Hey, any other comment? Okay. Hearing, no. Oh, Linda?
I just want to give everybody else a chance for it. Um, most of you know me. I'm Linda Hilker. I'm here as a concerned citizen about this zoning ordinance. I'm also a concerned citizen on the planning board, but I am not here representing the planning commission or any other board. I want to state that I have donated well over fifty hours to reviewing, researching, comparing, and editing these proposed revisions to our city ordinance. My time was a good investment. However, I am concerned that these ordinance, this ordinance not be adopted simply based on the amount of time that was spent on. To me, this adoption idea is ridiculous and outrageous because I've questioned, is this, are these revised ordinances detrimental to all citizens? And does it jeopardize the future of Wall and its development? Me, it's unconscionable that this revision to this zoning ordinance, zoning ordinance was started in the first place and has gotten this far when it was not needed. The current zoning ordinance needed a few tweaks which were made, and the current ordinance did not need this grand overhaul that it's gotten. Further, it's unconscionable to me that taxpayer money was spent on these proposed revisions to the city ordinance. I requested a financial report as to how much money was spent on this whole project, and I, to date, have not received an official report. An estimated thirty-five thousand to forty thousand dollars or more of taxpayer money has been spent on these proposed revisions that may not have been used in the first place. So I have to ask myself, is this revised ordinance in the best interest of all citizens and the future of planning and zoning in South? Are all citizens being served the best way possible in this order? Then my final part is, has the city council changed its position on cannabis establishments in the city? Because I was sitting in the audience when the city council voted unanimously not to allow cannabis growing, manufacturing, and testing, yet this ordinance opens the door for those things in our town. To me, this is not a final draft because the contents are continually being altered and changed with every revision. And as I said in the planning part of this, we don't know what the final product looks like. And there are inconsistencies to me and contradictions within these revised ordinances. And I'm very concerned that the planning commission will serve as, in an advisory capacity with this new ordinance. When I looked at the state open meeting laws, any board that's in an advisory capacity can bypass open meeting law. That bothers me because the public would not be aware of these things. These proposed revisions repeal many sections of the city ordinance and threaten others because I have compared the current city ordinance with this ordinance. I've laid them side by side. And there are other sections of our current ordinance that conflict that are going to be repealed that could stand up to be repealed.
Thank you, Linda.
Armin?
Thank you.
I have a question for Linda, if I may.
Yes.
With the estimated taxpayer money, how did you come up with that number?
I was told that number, and there's a document that Carolyn E. mailed to me that showed seventeen thousand five hundred dollars was paid. And I remember seeing another document that showed another seventeen thousand five hundred that was paid. Two Black House councils, government.
And then?
Let's just pay it once. I'm not sure what document.
So it's all happened then?
Seventeen thousand.
Yeah.
Yes, that's what the contract was. We had a written contract.
Then, I don't believe that zoning ordinance opens up a door to growing facilities because we already have an ordinance stating that we are not allowing one.
But if this ordinance gets adopted, it repeals the current ordinance. It does away with that.
So we have zero or being in the pound, if we went the way that.
That's not the way I read it. There's too many gray spots in this revised ordinance where that could be allowed.
Is that, Jennifer, what's your opinion on that?
There's no grow, any kind of facility, but a dispensary, that's the only one that's stated.
No testing, no growing, no manufacturing.
So it states cannabis establishments. If you look at the definition, it allows cannabis establishments. The definition of that is cannabis growing, manufacturing, and testing. That's in the definition.
Right. Which zone does it say establishment and delivery of anything?
That's in the definition, in the cannabis section.
You have to define those things. But if cannabis establishment in the foreface, if not listed in your permitted or conditional uses, is prohibited. And so I believe we use the word dispensary, cannabis dispensaries. So in the definitions, you have to define what those are because if somebody comes in and they're like, we want to do a growing facility, you have to know where, that it's defined somewhere. But in, in your permitted and conditional uses is where you find that. Anything not explicitly listed is prohibited.
What they can ask coming to that.
So if, if a growing, a cannabis growing facility is not explicitly listed in a permitted or conditional use, it's prohibited, and it says that under every zone, unpermitted uses.
But it sounds like the answer is unclear at this point.
Exactly. You know, if it's prohibited, it's prohibited.
But we don't know for a fact. You said you believe. I, I don't think that's, you can say here tonight that this latest revision that most of these people haven't read in its entirety, it's ninety-two hundred pages, says that anything besides a dispensary is prohibited, correct?
Anything that's not explicitly listed is prohibited.
But you can't sit here today and say anything besides a dispensary is prohibited in these ninety-two hundred pages.
That's, that's the way we wrote it, so.
So you can say that here tonight with the latest revision that I haven't seen. Yeah, prohibit is anything but a dispensary.
I'm going to check that she can't provide the page number.
But we're here for first reading, so I'm just establishing, nobody. Not you, not her, she's on the board, no, the public.
So I'm not pulling myself, and I'm not going to say that I a hundred percent know. If she says she found it in there, ask that if she can provide the page number. I can't see, page twenty-nine?
Yeah. Page twenty-nine, number twelve.
Which number?
Ten.
Okay, go. So go to four twenty, then it says the number. Four twenty-one. And it references right there.
In what page is that?
So four twenty, zero is on sixty-nine. That language, I believe, is adopted from your existing cannabis ordinance. So we took the exact language from your existing ordinance and placed it in there.
But what I'm saying is it says establishment. Establishments is defined as growing, manufacturing.
So the city shall limit the number of dispensaries to one.
Yeah, you have the reference.
Yeah. That, that's correct. It limits the dispensaries to one, but in the next section, it said, it references a cannabis establishment shall be located not less. And then it says again, cannabis establishment several times later.
Sure, so are you saying you want the change to be with dispensary?
I think to keep consistency because we looked back in your definition, in D definitions, not your definition. But you look back in D definitions, clearly there's a dispensary definition, and then there's a cannabis establishment which allowed for the testing of that.
So again, that wouldn't be, and I, I feel like it, it sounds like some people want there to be, whatever, they've, they've got their opinions on what the motion, the council should be. If you change establishments to dispensaries, I wouldn't consider that, if it's to be consistently throughout the ordinance, I would not consider that a substantial change. But if the public or the city or the city attorney feels differently, again, I mean, it's, it can be changed to be consistent.
The city attorney has not reviewed this document. I don't think most of the public has. I don't think the commission board has even thoroughly reviewed the latest revision. I think it is a substantial change among many that need to be addressed.
Well, if you've not read it or seen it, what would you make that?
Right here. I'm looking right here.
Glancing there right now, you indicated that there's numerous.
I have period concerns.
Concerns. Okay, so Linda, thank you for your comments and for your service. Is there any other comments to come before us tonight? Okay. Not seeing any. The next item on the, I'm going to close the public hearing then, move on to an agenda request. And that agenda request came from Rick. And the request says that Rick and Cam would like to discuss the potential impact of the proposed zoning ordinance.
So. I'll, I'll lead on. Like, like I said.
Go to Gloria. Do you want to go to?
No, I don't want.
You feel comfortable here?
Sitting here, Mary.
I, I just, I'm just trying to seek what your wishes are.
Yeah. Like I stated in the earlier meeting, I have concern, concerns about the proposed zoning changes that they will not only negative impact the city wall now, but will continue to do so in future generations. And I've worked, I, I didn't miss any meetings on the, uh, planning, zoning work.
That's true.
Did you say, Mary, a hundred and ninety-two hours?
No, two hundred and fourteen hours in meetings only. That doesn't count the amount of time that we all spent outside preparing for those.
And in my study and attending the meetings, that I'm concerned about some things. It, it seems like we're shifting, the shift of Wall's Development and Planning Authority from the Wall City Council and Planning Commission to the mayor and finance officer undermines the city council.
Undermines the city council's system, checks and balances. I hope the Wall City Council, uh, before they adopt, uh, a, a new zoning ordinance. Thoroughly study it, take their time, and know what they're getting into. And that's why I saw, thought out, uh, uh, the, the advice and counsel of Kent Hague. Because four years ago, um, or so, uh, the city wall hired Kent. To assist with planning and zoning issues and he has a lot of expertise there. I would not like to see the city council rush through with a new sort of ordinance that they just got in their hands. Two weeks ago. So they know what, what, uh, what they're signing up for. I, I think it endangers, uh. Established protections, the proposed revisions call for repeal of vital sections of our longstanding city ordinances. These ordinance have successfully guided our community for years. The removal of these sections and risk of further changes threaten to destabilize the regulatory framework. Uh, that has protected our city's integrity. I just hope the city council takes time, really evaluates this. Knows what they're getting into and we need to legally know, uh, uh. The ramifications of, uh, of possibly adopting, uh, the new, uh, zoning ordinance. I do think there, there has been inadequate public engagement. There has been troubling disregard of, of public notice regarding these revisions. Community members have not been given sufficient opportunity to participate in the meetings, review changes, provide feedback on these. And how they may affect our city growth and development and zoning. And I don't think the city council, uh, I don't think there's anything they can't do right now. As far as, uh, changing, uh, a zone, uh, you know. Going from egg to commercial to whatever, or, uh. There's anything they, they can't do, uh, because they have to vote, you know, if they have the vote to do it. They can make, uh, make a zoning change, uh, they, uh, grant a building permit. They can do that right now. So if we're, we're gonna, uh, get something new. Let, let's make sure, uh, it's legal and it'll, uh, help the city in years to come.
So Kent, welcome. And just because, and he alluded to that, I do not want the perception. Or I want a clarification and you made it earlier. You are here on a retaining. He has retained you personally, right?
That's correct.
City council has not hired you. People of Wall are not going to get a bill from you for mile each time you put in. Right. Because the word at the drugstore in the morning is going to be, well, we must be going to another lawsuit. Here comes Kent. So, so we want to clarify. He has retained you.
I'm Kent Hague. Was, uh, like Mr. Houston recommended, our remark, uh, was retained by the city, uh, about four years ago. And was heavily involved in the initial zoning aspect, but also, but blossomed out to be the great Love's Conflict. We unanimously warned South Dakota Supreme Court. It was definitely a David and Goliath type of thing and, and, uh, I'm proud to be part of that, pardon, proud to be part of, uh, those. City Walls affairs to whatever extent I can be. Mr. Houston has retained me to look over some of the aspects of, of what is troubling, questionable, unclear. Those kind of things. And there are a number of things that we have an example tonight. With the definition of cannabis establishment, uh, versus dispensary, that's just one. Appearing in more than one place that is contradictory or vague or in general confusing. So that is what leads to battles later and you get into definitions, but guess what? When you have those disagreements in the future and you have something that's unclear, that is not law. What you're asking the city council to do is make this law. That's what the ordinance is. So your obligation is to follow the law. And that's what a, a, a district court in South Dakota Supreme Court will hold you to. If you follow your own ordinance. Well, it, it's, it's clear now among all the other issues that are, that have been brought up and good issues. But it is clear that it's not ready for prime time as leading rumors, we call that, not ready for prime time, play the thing. But, um, it's not ready for prime time in my opinion because of some of these things. A lot of work's gone into this. You've got some of the best, uh, folks, especially Mrs. Seitzman. He got some of the best folks in the state working on this and guiding Wall through this. It's not a perfect product, nothing is. But what you don't, in my opinion, and I'm going to be put face with it, is that. You gotta pass it in order to find out what's in it. We've heard that before somewhere else. So there's that. Just like anything that's worthwhile, sometimes you gotta take it slow and methodical. And that's often what is referenced tonight is that we have procedures that need to be followed that are somewhat standard. And those procedures, um, are, um, somewhat established as a norm. But there are nuances to that. There are nuances set forth in this document that may not be the intent of the city council. And certainly may not reflect, uh, the majority interest of the city or the, the citizens of Wall. Yeah, that's enough of my general comments, I guess, but, uh, if, whatever, whatever the city council decides. There are certain things where it appears clear enough that the, the city council would be abdicating some of its ability to have discretion in passing certain things. Whether, whether you're called the board of adjustment or, uh, whatever. Um, because it's, it's been said many times and I, it's, it really comes down to semantics almost. Support of adjustment is, is the city council. Okay, well, fair enough. But there are certain things that would become. Uh, should I say, uh, increased in authority, increased in discretion at every level from the administrative official. And it's not always going to be the same person throughout. This is Wall. This is the last one, last time this was done, nineteen eighty. There's been a lot of administrative officials over the years, a lot of different city council people over the years. So when you do something like this, um, my recommendation is that take slow, take a breath. And utilize a very worthy document that's been prepared, but now tweak it so the ambiguities. Uh, are best addressed. You're never going to get all of them, but so they're best addressed. My recommendation to pass it now would be hasty and usually anything that's hasty is not a good decision, especially when it's a law. But you're going to be part of following this. Y'all are. So that's, that would be my, my, my comments. Is there anything further? Uh, you'd like to go?
No, I, I just would hope the City, well, city council would take their time and know what they're getting into. You, you have the document for what, two weeks and, and, uh. It's over, you know, it's a hundred pages and, and there's definitely, uh, some ambiguity in areas of concern. And, and, uh, when we do, uh, pass it, 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 that's the direction we go. It, it's going to impact us for decades.
And I might, might close with that. What I was just going to say is that, um, pro record. Uh, those of, who may not have been here during the, during the planning zoning commission meeting right before this. For the record, it was recommended and sent up to the city council without recommendation. Not we recommend the pass, we recommend the deny. It's without recommendation. Hey, so if you take that for what it's worth, because your, your planning zone committee isn't, isn't all that proud of it either as a whole. So I would recommend that you, uh, send, you know, deny and do not have the first reading. And send it back to the Planning and Zoning Commission for further development, further recommendation later. That, that, that is following your current procedure. It's not as recommended, or excuse me, it's, it's not recommended, it's not for pass or fail.
It was a title. Jennifer, did you want to make some?
No, I, I think there were some people that had a question.
Did you have a follow up then, Jennifer?
Um, no, I was just, I was just curious. I didn't realize Kent was involved with you guys dating back to twenty twenty. So I'm, I'm curious why you got till this year. Like was it on you that there was no zoning map and they've been re-zoning for like fifteen years without one?
Actually, what, my first call was originally from the economic development about how to maybe. How to, how to, how to deal with loves, good or bad, inner out, whatever. And, and it, it turned into, um. The unfolding of, of the contest and then the, the litigation between loves and the city of Wall. So I wasn't ever asked to, 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 to work on this.
So I mean, you mentioned ambiguity and I'm, I'm, I don't have an opinion in this. I respect whatever the city chooses to move forward with. So if you think it needs to be sent back to the planning commission for further study, I respect that. Or whatever other decision that comes from the council. But I would say your, your current ordinance has quite a bit of ambiguity, ambiguity because. You know, even in the part where you designate the zones, it doesn't list an exome, but you added an exome. So that's one of the very, there's many examples where it conflicts with itself. And it's because what you have has been added to over many years with many different authors. You have a lot of things that are actually taken from other states. The language doesn't even match state law, um, in South Dakota. So you have ambiguity either way. Um, and I also want to clarify. Um, I think you said something about you have to pass it to know what's in it. That never came from me. I mean, I want you to know it's in there. Um, I did a pretty good job of walking you through it. We read every line, had people comment on every line. Um, and, you know, I think it is a big document, but, um. If I, if I read it to you and walk you through every line and you still don't get it, I, there's probably not a lot more I can do, so.
Yeah, for those of us that have spent the last year on this, the idea that this has been rushed or whatever is, is out of sorts. But Mr. Hague, and you mentioned economic development. I don't recall that, that economic development reached out to you, but perhaps that happened. But I do remember as being president, economic development, you gave me this card. When we were talking about the industrial park and it says Hague Development Company because you are a developer, right? That, that's your business. And so when I was in the real world just trying to do research, what does planning and zoning commissions do? I went to Rapid City Zoning. I picked up, I pulled up the January fourth, planning and zoning. And there in living color was Kent Hague. And talking about or what was in front of the planning and zoning Rapid City. Was a request by an engineering firm out of Box Elder. And you were switching, doing a final plan development overlay. From townhouses to a gas station with a convenience store. And I just found that so interesting. And then Mr. Stuck Haven, one of the planning and zoning attorneys. Asked about the intersection of Moon Meadows and Highway sixteen. And walked through his concerns about that and you replied with how those were going to be all addressed. Uh, talked about the light, uh, the stoplight that would coordinate with Highway sixteen. And Sheridan Lake Road and all of that. And then I, as I watched it and then read the minutes. What that zoning did or what that planning commission did for Rapid City, for you. It said, um, all provisions of the general commercial district shall be met. And unless otherwise specific, that the western entrance would be painted a white diagonal. That all signage codes would have to be followed. But in the end, the final plan development overlay shall allow a five thousand square foot convenience store. With a drive-through and fuel cells, fuel pumps. And a sixty five hundred square foot restaurant. And any change, uh, is used that is permitted. In that, uh, if you've made any changes, it wouldn't be permitted, but otherwise. It would, it appeared that they gave you a building permit. And I just, you know, I, I, I watched and I read how, when you have ordinances. That in fact are darn good, how they can work and work smoothly. So. Have you moved any dirt? Do you have a convenience store and?
I'm sorry, did you interrupt?
No.
I, I wish I did. It's, um, it's actually Big D is the convenience store and restaurant that they are proposing. They're going to be, I'm told, uh, perhaps breaking ground on that as early as, as next April. And it's on the intersection of Moon Meadows Drive and Highway sixteen. I own, my brother and I, Brian, own the land to the west, I'm sorry, to the east of Highway sixteen. That we bought the original forty acres there years and years ago, the tax increment district there. Uh, and put in a lot of infrastructure and so forth. So, and now there is a stoplight there, uh, which is a huge life safety, uh, game. Um, we have an, we have, we, we, my brother and I own with investors, the Meadows apartment complex is a hundred, a hundred sixty unit apartment complex. Immediately to the east of that site. So it was, I was only there to answer some questions, uh, with regard to, um. If the, if the, if the board, that board of Rapid City had any questions about any kind of historical aspects of it. So, so no, it wasn't me that got that or wasn't my request given. It was, uh, Big D's request by and through an engineering firm.
So you, you were helping Big D. Move forward with that, with the.
Yes, that's all the land. It's in my, it's definitely in my interest to make sure they got what they needed and, but doing it right. Uh, the city council, or excuse me, in Rapid City, it's a, it's a, uh, a, uh, plan. Plan commercial development, sometime they call. Very designated uses. And, um, and everything that happens and there has been performance of that plan.
Right.
Or, so that's, uh, that was, that process was a year long.
And getting back to the city's planning and zoning ordinance, let's say, well, um, there is no doubt that you've got that experience. Which is why we selected you years ago to actually advise specifically on the tweaks that needed to be made. To, um, the current wall planning and zoning ordinance that's been in place since the late seventies. And worked well for this city. And, um, I, I'm very glad that Rick retained you. Because I was very glad, I was disappointed to see that we let him go. And once we did that, um, the effort to move the, the, um. Corrections and revisions to our existing ordinance that has worked for this city when stagnant for a while. So then we started over from an entirely different position. And regardless of whether Mary or, uh, Jennifer has spent a hundred plus hours. Reviewing this particular ninety to one hundred page document. The board itself has gotten the latest revision within the last two weeks. And the public and the members of the community absolutely have not had, I, I would say, an hour to review the latest. Ninety to one hundred pages. So I greatly appreciate your commentary. And, uh, I think that as the city's attorney, um, the amount of public input and feedback. On a change this massive to the way the city develops itself moving forward is woefully inadequate.
Thank you, Ms. Tresk.
You're welcome.
And, uh, anyone that wanted access to this, it was posted. So, anyone that wanted access to the, this document. Absolutely had it, they could come to the office and pick it up and print it for them, it was available electronically, so, yes.
And then the board itself has, has had it for two weeks.
Yes.
Sure. One, one of the things I might put in there, try and add on is that. Uh, anybody who brings it forward first is naturally going to be. Um, inferred upon them that, wow, that's their position, so they must want weed, or they must want a store, or they must want this or that. That's not necessarily the case, it's just, here it is. Let's look at it, let's pass, let's pass it or not, or let's change it, however, that's what this process is about, that's what's healthy about local. Input, local political process, all of what we're doing right now. I'm not gonna get off on a civics lesson here, but I, I think what's happening now is just healthy, it doesn't necessarily mean anybody has a particular agenda. There are points of concern that are valid on every side. But one thing I will say is that. For a first, first reading of an ordinance of a law that has not gone to your lawyer is a mistake on its face.
And so, Ms. Tresk, that makes me wonder if. How long will it take, would it take you to review and?
I mean, I, I'm not going to speculate.
Days, right, weeks, months?
I would need to get the document, um, but yeah, uh, the city has not sent me any, any draft of it.
Yeah, and, and when I contacted Ken. I wanted legal expertise to shine. Their light on this document and help us understand it, because I did, uh, was on that, uh, planning commission. Never missed a meeting and, uh. I understood what, what's going on, but I wanna know. Does the city council know what this law is applied, because we're, you know, if we pass it, obviously, if we pass. The last one in eighty and tuned it up a little bit, uh, it'll be around for a while, so. I, I, I think we should know what, what we're getting into and, and have our attorney, uh, look at it and advise us.
Uh, Jennifer, can changes be made between a first reading and a second reading?
Not substantial changes.
Not substantial, so if they're gonna like. Do a huge thing, but a word or two could be changed to that.
I think from what I heard tonight is. I think an appropriate recommendation from the city council would be to. Send it back to planning commission for further study, is a, is a typical motion made when this is the case. Um, you know, how do you consult with your attorney and, and whoever else you want to, but I think. Um, you know, we had in the, the planning, or the planning commission meeting, a few. I think valid, very valid points brought up by, um, Councilmember Hoffman. And there were a couple of others where, for clarity, I think, um, that wouldn't be an inappropriate response. So, if you do that, if you send it back to planning commission for further study, um, give the public more time. Give your attorney more time. What you would end up doing is re-advertising.
Yes.
Would you too, because it's a new document at that time, you would need a recommendation from your. Planning commission, which we didn't really get out of planning commission, we were one member short tonight, so it ended up in a tie. Um, and so you would go through the process again, it would be a new document, so. If the public is concerned about those changes and what changes are being made, they would be starting from scratch, because it, I mean. A lot of it might stay the same, but if there's substantive changes that come from your attorney's office or. From the planning commission, obviously, we want to give the public plenty of time to review that. And again, you're always gonna have at least ten days, because state law requires that you, uh, provide the draft to the public with, you know. And a notice within ten days.
That's right, so, then we're ten days and then ten days, and so we're months out.
Um, it kind of depends, because of how your local paper is. Um, I think your weekly paper provides a little bit of time, you have to get, have to get the notes to the paper. Um, you know, to have it be published for those ten days prior. But, uh, a lot of that's gonna depend on the time it takes for your attorney, if, if the. If the desire of the council is to have, give your attorney more time to review it, then it's gonna be dependent on her timeline, I wouldn't even. Suggest like setting a date or a hearing or any of that until you have her, um, review or blessing or recommended changes. Um, and then those would need to go to planning commission. Um, of course, and to make the changes and then make the recommendation. And there's no requirement that that signing and zoning hearing, hearing be on the same day or same evening at the city council. I, I think it just ended up that way because of how the regular meetings of the planning commission were, but. But it doesn't have to be, you could have the, the planning commission. Um, meet on a Monday and your city council be on Thursday with their recommendation coming forward. And that way, if there's things that come out of planning commission, the public would have an opportunity to reply with a, with a city council meeting.
Rick, you said, um, every meeting.
Yes.
So, can you point out some of the big changes that you're concerned about?
Well, probably the biggest thing was, you know, the structure of. You know, the, the city councils always. Approved building permits, we've done that forever, and, and Jennifer, uh, very. Accurately explained it, the process, the, the, she thinks we need to, to be into now. And I just like, our attorney to look at and to tell us, yeah, this is, you know, good, or. I, I mean, I, 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 uh, uh, don't have legal expertise. And I think, uh, uh, we took a little extra time, and like I said, there's no zoning change or building permit. That this council can't pass now with a vote. I, I mean, with our present ordinance, so I think the, if we take a, a, a little time, uh, to look this over. Uh, put it back, uh, planning it, zoning, get, uh, get Stephanie, it's time to look over and advise us. I think that's prudent on our part. And I feel a lot better.
I. I guess I have a just question, if we know we're doing the process wrong according to our current ordinance. So, do I start doing the right way, or do we continue doing it wrongly?
I think as long as we are move, know, recognizing that and moving forward. I, that's a legal question, but if we're moving forward because we know there needs to be change. I mean, I don't think we could do anything to make everything perfect tonight anyways.
So I think what she's asking is, from an administrative position that she's in. You're currently not following what your existing ordinance says. So she's asking the question of, should she try to follow what the current ordinance says, or continue. The process that you've been using, which does not follow your current ordinance, but it's kind of precedent that's been set.
I think that's a them question.
I mean, there's variables in that, I, again, I, I'm not even seeing what's proposed. There is nothing illegal about the way that the planning mission and the council has been. Um, advancing the development to dates.
Not following our ordinance, so.
There, there have been, there, there are in the proposed one, and there have been in the past. Recognized changes that need to be made, but there is nothing illegal about the procedure that the city has used. All yet it could be improved upon.
Um, didn't you say it's law? I thought you said that the, this is law. And when you got up here, didn't you say the zoning ordinance is law?
I, I'm, I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you.
Didn't you tell, didn't you say in your presentation that the zoning ordinance is law and you have to follow it?
Of course, I mean, an ordinance by is definition is a law.
And so I think that's what Carolyn is concerned about, is your current procedures don't follow what's currently written in your existing law. And so she is confused as to, do I follow what the ordinance says, or do I follow the precedent that has been set for. Years back, you know, the, and, and which of those, I guess.
Right, and in, and in practice, which has been long established, what you're saying. Uh, and has that come, has that presented some problems in the past, I don't know, I don't have much knowledge of your history. Nor do I have the ordinance, or I can say, well, hmm, wow, well, you, you guys screwed up there, 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 and there, better stop it. No, that's, you, 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 you have a procedure that has generally worked for you. It may not be entirely consistent, I can't say that for sure, may not be entirely consistent with what the ordinance says you should do. But right now, I'd say you, you continue as you were until we get this better, newer. Faster, stronger ordinance in place, if that was the choice. But it has to be an improvement, that's one thing you want to look at, is to actually improve your, your, your processes. And, and maintain constitutional.
This improves our processes.
Yeah, I, I.
This has problems, and that's what Carolyn.
Yeah.
And Jennifer are both pointing out to you.
Yes.
Very clearly, Eric, did you have a comment a moment ago?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions, um. So, the committee that came up with the new ordinance, the planning and zoning committee, are they're. Supposed to be an unbiased group, correct?
Super, yeah.
Planning and zoning board should be unbiased.
Uh huh.
Okay, the one thing that worries me is that the very first thing that Mr. Hague starts talking about is the love suit with. Or the lawsuit against loves. So how are we gonna be able to say any of this is not biased towards just not changing any of this? Because you're worried about that.
Yeah, I'm not worried about it, um, because that's, that's history. Uh, and. The, what, what, you can only be wary of is trying, nothing's perfect, but. That you can only be wary of is looking for obvious. Obvious contradictions, they're supposed to have things, and try to tighten it up to the extent possible. Is this an improvement from what we have now? Structurally, it probably is, I mean, those ordinances over the last forty years become, they become a word salad sometimes. Pointed in phrase. And that is, this, will this be an improvement from what we have? Probably, because you know, find stuff that, you know, implement it better, when you can navigate it better. And you get rid of those contradictions that are all over the, the code, etc. So that's what, that's the whole effort in trying to refocus, we have a new comprehensive plan. We have ag zoning, which we've done a stopgap definition of, of what can go in ag, what constitutes that. There's an improvement. Um, and it's better than it was, and I think this, when the final product will definitely be better than what we have now. Just, I need to make sure what the hell it is.
Yeah, so you're laying out there on Moon Meadows, I know this is totally different, but a very high travel road. I, I imagine if you could not have turned that commercial, you would have been highly upset.
It was always in the general commercial, actually, when I got bought, it was ag, four acres of ag. But, but, uh, on Highway sixteen, but it was always in the comprehensive plan that that would be a general commercial area. Actually, I believe my department complex is, uh, is own office commercial, because it fits a little bit better than the city's.
Sure.
But the rest is all.
Like highway, highway frontage and interstate frontage, yeah.
It's general, it's general.
But are you saying that highway frontage and, and interstate frontage shouldn't be commercial?
So, definitely, I think, is the highest best use, to have it, um, unless there's a competing interest. Right next to it, and unfortunately, here, I think, is the, the big. Road, which actually had a residential neighborhood next to an area, it was done at, at, and we had over ninety reapers. Coming away every night, so. You get back into, okay, health sake and welfare, you will announce, okay, what's best for, uh, for those who are affected. And that goes back to the abdication, uh, to the extent that, there, it's one of the concerns I had here, and it's been articulated. Tonight by, um, by Mr. Houston and a few others, I think, is that there, it, it, what's in here could. Demonstrate an abdication, or literally lead to an abdication of what your authority is that you exercise now. Just, that's what I want you, want, I would recommend be, uh, be aware of. Is that, how much authority do you want to give, uh, as, as well as administrative officer does their job, as well, as well the PMZ does a job. And yes, I agree, a PMZ should be, uh, the majority of it should be not the city council, I totally agree with that. Maybe, maybe a liaison, maybe one voting member, who knows? But that's one of those things that, to be subject to discussion, because you don't want all the exact same minds all the time, however, you do want. In my opinion, you do want the final decisions being made by those who are elected. Not a, not a, not a volunteer board as you're, as you're mentioning, or.
Unfortunately.
That's how it's written now, just so there's no confusion.
Yeah, we got to that, that's what we got to.
To your earlier point, Jennifer, um, you know, that reminded me of one of the things that. Your, your earlier statement is the ordinance are being acting illegally. If we don't make adjustments to our ordinance, and one thing we went through in the past. Was the language of our ordinance, our previous language. That addressed the makeup of the planning and zoning commission and the restriction of council members on that commission. And we actually were in violation of our ordinance, but state statute had long previously addressed that that's not a workable. Uh, statute for small communities that are lucky enough to have anybody to serve on those. So, even though statute had legalized that long before, we just hadn't made that change to our ordinance. But it wasn't that we were operating illegally, we had just restricted ourselves based on old law. And we did make that change, but those are the kinds of things that I was talking about that, you know.
Yeah, so the current ordinance has the exact same language, your, your, so the draft ordinance has the exact same language as your current ordinance, because. The commission wanted to keep that same language, which allows. Up to, to, to. Um, have people to serve on the commission, so that they weren't limited by their songs. Even though during the discussion, the, um, planning and zoning did indicate that they felt they could get five. Um, people who are knowledgeable in the field or, or eligible or available to serve on those, they didn't want to. Paint themselves into a box, so the existing ordinance does. In, in any case where the planning commission felt that appropriate, utilize the exact same language that is in your existing ordinance. And that's one of the places where it stayed the same.
Jim, did you want to make a comment?
I just, I have an interesting question for the attorneys. On the, let's go back to two thousand and twenty, when that law was passed. And then the lawyers come in and they said that the law was written wrong, isn't it the job of the. US attorney, or whose job was it to read that law in the first place? And why was there no accountability for this?
Yeah, I love that, I, I, at that point, is one of the first things I, I thought too. And, um, was it Ravensburg who was the AG at that time? Anyhow, AG is supposed to look at these before they go on the ballot. And isn't that his job?
And who's held accountable when this happens? Because I wanted someone to be held accountable, I called twenty lawyers and I got.
Not talking about marijuana, yeah.
Right, so, right, we're back, that's that.
Okay, okay.
I'm, I'm sorry, it's kind of fun, but excuse me.
Yeah. We do have a lot of the agenda.
Yeah.
And, and I, I seriously think. I seriously think that the people, the public that are interested in this topic are in the room tonight. And trying to push this down the road, or whatever. I just, uh, see an extension of time, but not, uh, picking up any. Valuable changes or whatever, so. With that being said, um, with that being, being said, what's that?
Can I make a comment?
Oh, Carolyn, yes, I'm sorry, I.
You know, I asked which, what I was supposed to follow, now that I know the way our current ordinance is supposed to be handled. I don't feel comfortable, just because we've always been doing it this way. That I continue that way, it's no different if I'm driving down a highway and that, I get stopped from the cop and he says, you're driving. Sixty and a forty mile an hour, but I continue to do it, because I always have driven down there, what is the difference? I'm being put in a really bad position here, and I don't feel good about it, so I just want to share that to the public.
Okay, and I, I understand what you're saying, and it has been such an education process for those of us on that. Um, on the planning and zoning. Plus myself, to actually. Read the ordinances, understand what they say, how they should work, and, uh. Following ordinances are important, that's for sure. And following ordinances are important, that's for sure. So our next item then, on the agenda, is to, it's the first reading of ordinance twenty-four oh one. We got a no recommendation from Planning and Zoning. The city council can move forward. Is there anyone that would like to make a motion in regard to this, that we either can move ahead with calling this the first reading? Or?
Well, I, I, I think, think, I, I'd make a motion that we send it back to Planning and Zoning just to give our attorney time to review it. And, and so we have our legal expertise look at this document and advise us. And, and she, she can't, and if, and if we pass this first reading this evening, there, there can't be any substantive, substantive changes. And so I think that would buy Stephanie the time to review it.
So the motion you're making is to deny first reading and send it back to Planning and Zoning?
Yes.
So do we have a timeframe that we're interested in, or is this a forever?
Well, I don't think this is a forever thing at all. I don't think it's going to take Stephanie that long. What's that? Jennifer?
You made a motion, but I think you need a second before you report the question. You need a second.
Correct.
Sorry.
You are correct.
I need a second.
You need a moment.
Second.
He made a motion.
There you go, now.
Okay, so there's been a motion made to send it back to Planning and Zoning. There's no timeframe on it. So.
I'd like to get a timeframe on it. I mean, I had two weeks to go through this document, and that's not my job, or it is my job, I did that official. I found time during my spare time to go through the ninety-three pages, which twenty of them were definitions. So what would be a timeframe for you during that?
Um, I would say I'm as concerned about the time I need to review it as I am an adequate time for the final version that I'm expected to advise the council on, which I assume is the one the, the board got the last two weeks, the latest version two weeks ago. I'm as concerned about my time to review it as I am adequate public input. So I would like to give an amount of time for me to review it of a month. And an amount of time to gather public input of at least an additional two weeks.
I can get public input in three days, going door to door and talking to people.
Which is fine, but that's not an official record. That's not an official record, and that doesn't fulfill our legal obligations to gather public input.
So Jennifer, were you under the assumption that the Planning and Zoning Commission had already had some sort of interaction with, with our city attorney and some of that? I, I just, for me, it's just hard for me to wrap my head around why we're here this late in the game and.
So I would have thought that it would have been forwarded on, but I don't, I don't know whose job it would be to do that. Again, I don't correspond directly with the, the city attorney, because I don't want to get any.
Sure, I was just, I was just wondering if that.
I would have, I would have thought she would have had it, or if it was out for public view. I don't know, does she have to be ordered by the city council to review it? Probably.
Yeah.
So, so did that answer your question?
It did, thank you. Okay, but I, I think that's a reasonable time, timeframe, and I think the, the council would benefit from Stephanie's expertise, and, and, and that's why I, I sought out Kent's advice, is because, because I thought, I, I want to know what are the legal issues with this document, if any?
Do we have a law and legal issue in our current ordinance?
So are you saying, Zach, that you read this whole thing, you don't have one question, and you totally comprehend everything in it?
Gross hand comprehend.
Okay, so that's all that we're saying is, is that it would be nice to have some help with that. That's all I'm saying.
You've got to have attorneys, but you're going to get in trouble.
Okay. Kim?
As, as Stephanie just referenced, it's the, once the public's politics, it's not ever the attorney's job to dictate public policy. That is the elected official's job. So when Stephanie looks through it, she can make sure that, that it flows, it's consistent with state statute. You can only do what state statute enables us to do. So public policy comes from you, is sent to the attorney to make sure it's properly incorporated. And then, and, and consistent with law. That's, that's the scope. To me, I think thirty days is way too short, although I appreciate your ambition, but, but at the time, by the time you get public input and policy decisions, now you can bring to them, okay, where I'm at this point. And, and that's what I, I was thinking earlier, is that just like any elephant, small bikes, or you can get it done eventually. So you, you hit on the first X number of chapters, dealing with such and such. The city council has, or PMZ has a discussion regarding the same. Much of it's already been thought out. But there, there are these particular issues that are concerned, and PMZ, would you address just these two chapters by the next meeting or next two weeks? And you have some method of just knocking it out. Otherwise, you're giving them, hey, how about this in this list, and they're dumping back on you. I think the, the small incremental aspects is most effective, I think.
Well, it would be. Exactly back during planning.
It would be ambitious to do it in a month, but I am as concerned about the legal procedure that we have followed to do as anything else during the love's litigation. The, the crux of their initial challenge to our, our authority at the Planning and Zoning and council was whether our ordinance was properly passed. And we chose not to take that fight up because it involved going to microfilm and peer to determine whether we did that. By today's records, anybody that considers that they have not received adequate notice of what's in this ordinance and that it hasn't been properly passed with adequate public input has more than adequate record to challenge even the passage, and I don't want that to visit. We don't need to go there.
Uh, Ms. Trask, would your intention be to, or first of all, Mr. Hague, do you respect the consultant that we had hired to help us through this process?
Do I, what?
Do you respect the consultant that we had in this? Absolutely.
Yeah, I mentioned earlier, that, I do now have a whole organization and, and have no qualms and certainly have no basis for any disrespect, if that's the difference at all. It's just, everybody's been tasked to do a lot of different things, and much of it overlaps, and certain things come out in agendas or not. Who knows? But I think now, because we're at a point, and a lot of work's been done, it's not wasted money. Not wasted money, and while work's been done, to now present it to your legal, have them go through it. And I can say, I recommend that it be done in small chunks. And before you know it, you're going to be through it in about, taking two sessions, roughly per that by the time they discuss it, then they pass on the next session if necessary. But make sure it's relatively thorough, and that then it reflects. And you don't even have to pass the whole thing at one time. Eventually you will, as an instrument. But you, you can, each, each one of those is a separate ordinance. The whole thing is an ordinance, but each one of those provisions, and it, it can be passed peacefully, I'm not necessarily recommending that, but it can be brought to a point where then the final product is put together by legal and presented every day.
So I'm, okay, the reason I asked you about having a consultant in the room, experienced, renowned statewide. Are we going to get a rewrite from Ms. Trask? Or are we going to have, where she's reviewed and found this word or this great thing? Are we looking and expecting a rewrite? And you're saying take things in chunks, when that's what we've just spent the last year doing? I, I'm not following this at all, but I'm rolling dollar signs.
Well, respectfully, we submit that whatever you've done collectively, or individually, or otherwise over the last year has resulted in something that's not palatable. Okay, it's not workable, it's not a lot of things, a lot of parts of it aren't.
My goodness.
So it's, it's, it's just going to have to take some time. People don't need to infer that their agendas were not on either side, if they're hard sides. I'm not a member of this community, I'm just going to tell you how, what I think and felt like it is, regardless of whose feelings are hurt or not. Did, did, did you ever do some fine work? Certainly. Is it a, it is a, it, it's a bigger task than it looks. Believe me, and I think everybody realizes that. It's a big task. And, but, but what's here is, is not, from listening tonight, the listening input is not something that's ready for passage. So is it, is it sixty percent of the way there, seventy percent of the way there? Probably. So take those clarifications, check for constitutionallities, check for proceduritis, all those kind of things, and bring it forward.
And Stephanie, what, what kind of timeframe? You said a month, and.
I mean, that would be very ambitious, but I, I could certainly strive for that. I do contrast the amount of time that the state took with very gifted consultants on the comprehensive plan, which was years, and included small groups, multiple meetings inviting input from the community, and all of that to produce an advisory document. And like Mr. Hague has, has highlighted, we're looking to pass law. It's compulsory. And I just feel the, the procedure and the public input are critical. Myself, I, I think I could, within a month, have a, a pretty good recommendation. I still want more public input than this.
And how are you going to get that public?
Notice the hearing, and, and with a lot more notice than two weeks since the board got the actual document that the public is supposed to have commentary on for two minutes, for up to thirty minutes, as the actual hearing on the first reading. That, that, looking at that, there is nothing dispensable about that from a legal procedural standpoint.
Okay, can you remind me what the motion on the floor is?
Motion by Houston to deny the first reading and send it back to Planning and Zoning. So the attorney has time to review a second by Mike.
So it's going to go back to Planning and Zoning first? Going to Planning and Zoning?
Normally, the motion would be to send it back to Planning and Zoning for further study, and hopefully that would include the, the attorney reviewing. So I, I think your motion could be made a little more clear, would follow more of what is typical for Planning and Zoning than if your motion ends to send it back to Planning and Zoning for further study.
Well, and, and Stephanie, if you could wrap it up in a month and a half?
Seriously?
Yeah, seriously.
Month and a half.
Mary, I, I think this is an extremely important document, and our attorney needs to look at it. And we've never instructed her to, no, I don't think a month and a half, it's, you know, she wants public comments.
I, I mean, that, that's what, if you've spent two hundred hours.
In meetings.
To do.
In meetings.
An adequate job.
In meetings.
That means you do need to be realistic, yeah.
So that is how thorough we were in that timeframe.
The motion should, I would recommend it include, at least so it's contemplated, that the Planning and Zoning Commission be directed to work with the city attorney in, in this sending it back for further study. Just to so that they have the authority to work without you guys having to say each and every time. You're going to create.
We are not going to take it in chunks. I mean, we've, we've done the chunk thing. So I, I'm objecting to that idea.
And what I was suggesting, Madam Mayor, is that, that PMZ, however they do it, incorporate the assistance of the city attorney and have the authority to do that.
And, and I would also like that I am independently directed by the actual board membership, not conflicting directions from a non-board member. If it's to be sent back for me to work with the board, I need to be able to work with the board and the membership of the board.
I would like to say that when you do that, you do that with the whole board, not here's one privately, and then this one privately. You do it as a group. I know it's going to cost the city money, but to visit with one and then to visit with the other one could possibly be a little confusing on what they're feeling.
And I absolutely agree with you, Jerry, and that I think is what Kent was referring to, when, if we're going to meet and I'm going to meet with the whole board to go through everything, it's much more realistic to talk about piecemealing it than sitting down and doing a marathon with the entire board. I, I mean, that is just not realistic.
When we get back to that, I got another question.
Jennifer, I'd like.
Back off the clock. Planning and zoning had meetings to discuss land outside the town and whether it should be zoned, changed. It never made it to council. They just voted about, to heck with you, that it were done. They'd never even brought it to city council for our opinions, and I'm not sure if that was legal, is it? Can the Planning and Zoning make the decisions for the whole council?
Uh, no, not under our current ordinance. I do not know what this has in it, but under the current ordinance, the, the commission's function is to make recommendations to the council.
Jennifer, did you want to make a comment?
I'll just, um, it could be possible if the city attorney reviewed it and provided a comment. You know, kind of like the way the, the council or the coworkers did. I mean, can she review it in entirety and provide?
Right.
And I think she's reviewing for, you know, obviously, does it meet state law? And is it defendable and forth, and soon, and it's kind of what attorneys look for. I do feel like the, the process of meeting the planning commission and going through it all, chunk by chunk, they redo if everything has been done. But I, maybe there's a specific reason why it's being proposed to be done that way.
Is that, would that, would you consider that? To review it and put your remarks in writing?
Which, which budget, I mean, leaking?
So I, I was wondering if it's possible, so Kent was reading by Rick to review. He writes through it, I see he's like, put his little sticky notes on it, and, and he was able to express his concern for at least some of them at Planning and Zoning. Is it possible for you to do something similar? Because it does sound like what you're proposing is redoing everything that the planning, like the same process has already been done. It seems like it would save a lot of time and probably a lot of cost for the city, and you could do a review in its entirety and provide comments either back to the Planning and Zoning or back to the city. It just seems like it would save a lot of expense.
I'm not proposing the, what I'm directed to do, there's a motion on the floor. It's to deny first reading tonight, send it back to the Planning and Zoning Commission to work with me. If that looks like I, I go through it, and then I meet with the commission board and, and go through kind of down and dirty, you know, I want to draw your attention to this. Now let's talk about this, we have concern here, and I, I gather feedback. That is what I would ideally like to do, but I am at the direction of the council and the board.
Okay.
Well, let's, Stephanie, let's target a month, month and a half, tops, and let's wrap it up.
Okay, and I would.
So that'd be October first.
I would like to clarify, is that for us to present a revised version to notice and have public hearing on? and have public hearing on, or is that to include notice and public hearing for prior to first reading? Because I think a month and a half is adequate to do what me and the board need to do. I don't think it's adequate for proper notice and public hearing and input.
Well, could we in, in, incorporate the, the, well, let's see. Could, could we have a couple sessions of public hearing?
Yeah, for sure.
Of course you would allow that, but is that really necessary, considered, considering the meetings that you've been through already?
Well, I, 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 I think, I, I think we would appreciate, you know, the public consent vote, if we could if we could do both, I think that'd be awesome.
So, and these meetings with you would be noticed, and the public could come to those meetings that you're having with planning and zoning? Those are public meetings, they'd have to be published that way?
Well, the
The planning and zoning, if they're having a working session.
Right, so when we get the product that is ready for public input, I, I, you know, the board itself did not get what they were supposed to pass on first reading tonight since two weeks ago. So, I, I, I think it's going to be a waste of the public's time to come to give input on something that's not ready for their review. So, I would say, yes, we, we noticed that we're, we're having a planning and zoning commission meeting
Yes.
to work on it, but I want a public hearing when we have made what we expect to be presented for first reading that's widely noticed and unrestricted, public comments is invited and encouraged on that, on that final product that we intend to present for first reading.
Okay, so how many understand what her plan is here?
Most first you need to vote on motion.
Okay, so. We do have a second, refer it back to planning and zoning. And then what was the rest of it?
Send it back to planning and zoning for the attorney to have time to review.
Deny the first reading tonight.
Yeah, okay, so that's been moved and seconded, so, uh, all those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
Okay, roll call vote? Roll call vote?
Discussion from, I'm just curious the cost for the city doing it all?
She was contracted for seventeen thousand five hundred dollars. We have no idea how many dollars we're talking, moving forward. Roll call vote, please.
Mike?
Okay.
You're voting yea on
My motion.
To deny the motion or to deny the first reading? Hawk?
No.
Houston?
Yes.
Morgan?
No.
Hoffman?
Nay.
Okay, so three.
Motion.
Fail. Okay. So, moving forward.
I, I make the motion to approve the first reading of ordinance twenty-four dash zero one.
Second.
Okay, there's been a motion to approve first reading on ordinance twenty-four oh one, and there's been a second. All those, any further discussion, or Jerry, did I cut you off a moment ago?
No, I had a question and I lost it.
Okay, sorry. Okay, all those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
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 Opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
Roll call vote, please.
Mike? Hawk?
Yes.
Houston?
Nay.
Morgan?
Yes.
Hoffman?
Yea.
Okay. That is three yeses and two nays. Okay? All right, that takes us then, do we have to do anything else there? Jennifer, at this point, are we ready for item eleven on the agenda? Which is to approve the minutes of the August first city council meeting.
So.
Okay, it's been moved, is there a second?
Aye.
Jerry has seconded, all those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Okay, in your packet was the city claim, or the claims for the city. City bills as well as the fire department?
Motion approved.
Is there a second to, okay, there's been a motion and a second to approve the claims for the city of Walms, Fire Department, Library and Cemetery, all those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, then, we have a pay request, item number thirteen. That comes from Holstein Excavation, the amount is two hundred and seventy-eight thousand eight hundred and eleven dollars and seventy-seven cents. And so, Jay, thank you. Oh, Tim.
It's coming, the recommendations coming from the engineer.
Oh, not, sorry. I saw Jay in the room and I forgot about Tim. Um, Tim?
I don't know if you want to try, can you just speak, Tim, or do you want us to put you up on the screen?
Nope, you're fine, I can just talk if that works fine for you. Um, yes, thank you, Mayor, and, and I, I believe Jay may wanna give an update on the project as well, but I can give a quick update and then also talk through the pay estimate as well. Um, I'll, I'll leave the more detailed update to Jay if he'd like to. Uh, project is nearing completion over there, we're kind of moving into what I think we're all considering uh, finish up and completion items. Um, they did, I believe, completed some of the asphalt pavement work there by the grain elevator today. Uh, and then also, and that, that work is not included yet in this pay estimate, but specific to this pay estimate, uh, they do, it's just kind of a variety of additional concrete work, um, and various finish up items. With this pay estimate, we do, we are sitting at about ninety percent completion of the bid items, so that kind of, I guess, tracks that comment of finish up items as well. Um, we do anticipate tentatively one more pay estimate and a final balance change order, and we'll, uh, we'll get this one wrapped up as well. With that, no concerns on K L J's end, uh, we are recommending approval of this pay estimate, uh, but I'll certainly turn it back to you, Mayor.
Okay, so, thank you, Tim, for that update. So now, Jay, would you like to give us an update before we approve this, or?
No, approve it first.
I just think we'd better hear your story, if you'd like to go to the podium, please.
Mayor of City Council, thank you for having us in town as always, and, uh, it's the first time I've been in town and in range, so, thanks for that. Um, real quick update, first lift of asphalt today, um, all the way around, we'll do the second lift tomorrow with Western doing that work. Uh, Todd, local contractor here, will be removing the two temporary roads by the airport and by Gold West either tomorrow or Monday. Uh, Seating Company, Split Rock out of Brandon, South Dakota, will be here Monday for seating prep and seating. They will have a person in town for the following week for watering. Uh, we wanna get established real quickly grass as quick as we possibly can. Um, and then T S I, who is our traffic control sub, will be back in for just the striking of the pavement and so forth, so. We're in the midst of cleanup, we'll be doing a little bit of joint sealing tomorrow, uh, kind of wrapping up stuff on our end that falls under our umbrella that's not so contract work. So, I think we're almost at the finish line, so. As far as ribbon cutting, I was gonna ask about that, I think, um, we need to wait until we actually have some established grill, nobody likes to take pictures in front of dirt. Even though I'm working it all day long. Uh, my recommendation would be September timeframe, while this will be back up before then, but we'll just kind of monitor the grill progress and see what happens, so. Any questions for me or anything else we can do at this point, for anybody?
When do you think it'll be back open, or?
Tomorrow night.
Tomorrow.
Yeah. So, yeah, once we do the second lift of asphalt, we just have to let it cool off, so I know it's gonna be a little bit warmer tomorrow, but once we're once we're hard on, hard on the top of it, we basically have traffic control hold, so. And then T S I will come through and collect all the cone, barricade, everything next week. We'll pick it up, so, a little bit more grading work to do, I know the, one thing I will mention, I know the grade right now looks a little rough with a lot of the rocks that's up from Brandon we had. Our seating contractor comes in with what they call a Harley rake, which will basically pull the rock up out of the dirt, so we actually get a nice flopped up kind of dirt, and actually looks like topsoil, and, and, you know, you guys hold the retention on the seating, so it is in their best interest to make sure it grows, so that's why they're leaving a first hearing now to make sure it's watered, so.
How do you water it?
Fill up large tanks and drive down the road and spray it.
Got fire truck there?
No, we have a hydrorieger set up by the church.
Okay.
Will the trucks be able to drive across? That, did, did Corinna was out a little bit?
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow?
Tomorrow night.
It'll be empty coming that, going that way.
Yeah, tomorrow night, once they're gonna do that first lift, the second lift on that intersection east of the tracks first thing tomorrow morning. So, once it's hardened up and K L J gives a screen light, we'll open that up.
Any other questions or comments? It's a beautiful, it's, it's just gonna be beautiful when we get all the traffic signs off and but you've done an amazing job.
Very good.
And, uh, I know you had till December, but you had, and you wanted July, but you're gonna be September, I think.
Close, yeah.
Yes.
Ranchers really like when they come around, cause it always rains.
Yeah, you kinda let us down this time.
This was the only dry spot I could work this day. Thank you better than you said council.
Thank you, Jay.
Thank you, Jay. Okay, with that being said, then, um, I do need a motion then to approve this pay request.
So moved.
Okay, so Rick has moved?
Second.
And Zach seconded, any other comments, concerns? All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Okay, in your packet also was an opportunity for you to review the employee on-call schedule, the sales tax report. Again, very concerning, but everybody seems to be down. Any comments or thoughts on sales tax? BBB, however, is up, so that's interesting. Uh, your budget report was included as as part of that packet. Any questions on any of those forms that were provided for you, for Carolyn? Okay, hearing and seeing none. Is there any, we have one more public comments here for anyone that would like to address something with, for
Sorry, I don't wanna be disrespectful, but I suppose to be somewhere else, so can, can we do a wall ambulance report on the public comments real quick? We're gonna keep it under three minutes.
Okay.
Is that good?
Okay, is that acceptable to everyone on the council, to allow her to speak in, in?
Well, I'm not gonna be talking, so you can time him.
Okay.
Madam Mayor, City Council, thank you for letting me speak this evening. Before I get to the first for July for the Wall Ambulance Service, just wanted to take a moment to introduce myself. Uh, my name is Justin Perkins, and as of August first, I was appointed as the Director of the Wall Ambulance Service. Um, get to know me just a little bit on a personal side. I, uh, was born and raised in a small town, almost exactly like Wall, um, Case Springs, Nebraska, just southwest of here. Population of six, six hundred and fifty people, so I can definitely, uh, relate, uh, small towns growing up. Um, married, just, uh, celebrated our twenty-fifth wedding anniversary two weeks ago. Uh, I have a son who's twenty-two years old, he's a senior in Billings, Montana, at the university. And I have a daughter who's seventeen, and she is a senior at Stevens High School. On a professional side, I have worked for the Rapp City Fire Department for the last twenty-three years. Um, the first twenty-one years of that was riding ambulances and fire trucks. About two years ago, I decided to take a little bit different avenue, and I, uh, moved into the Inspection and Investigation Division of the Rapp City Fire Department, mainly dealing with, uh, fire codes, building codes, and investigations of any fires. Um, about one year ago, received an email saying that Wall Ambulance was, we need some help, need E M Ts, so I decided to, uh, come down here, um, pretty much been doing about every weekend, about ninety percent of the weekends coming down, and then, uh, about three months ago, decided that I didn't have enough on my plate already, so I, uh, applied for the Director's position and was appointed to it. Um, if you ever have any questions, please feel free to reach out to me, I know that most of the time any questions go through Lily for the Wall Ambulance Service, but if there's anything that I can help with, please, uh, reach out to me. Um, as far as the numbers go, for July, we had eighteen calls for service. Um, we had five cancels and or refusals of those eighteen. We had eight transports to the hospital and five rodeo standbys. Um, one big thing, not in July, but kind of in August during the rally, we, uh, did our first annual pancake. Um, I think it went over really well, we raised approximately twenty, well, over twenty-two hundred dollars. It was a free breakfast, but a free will donation, so we had some very, very generous individuals that, uh, gave money. Um, thank you, Chamber of Commerce and all businesses in town that donated to that, that make it so that we could have that money. Uh, it was in correlation with the Wall Fire Department, so we just split that money. Um, as with anything, the first time we've ever done it, you know, we learned from it, there are some things we did really, really well, and some things that we can definitely expand on for next year, and, uh, I think it'll be, become an annual thing, and we'll do really, really well next year. So, I'll have, if you guys have any questions.
Are you gonna move here?
What's that?
Are you gonna move here?
Um, unfortunately, uh, I'll just get a really, a car that gets really good gas mileage. So, no, I'm pretty well established in Rapp City, so.
Welcome to Wall.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Yes, good night.
Good night, guys.
Okay, is there anyone else that wants to give public comments? Okay, Gordon.
Mine, really mine. Again.
Yes. Oh, number nine.
So, yeah, I'm just trying to get you a little nervous here. I actually like how you actually, uh, had a description of what people are actually gonna be talking about. Uh, on a lot of the agendas, I see it says Agenda Request. Jimmy Coats, Agenda Request, Linda Hill there, and the public doesn't know what they're talking about. So, it'd be really nice to have that description on there as well, so that we can know whether, you know, we wanna give input or not. So, uh, that's item number one. Uh, item number two is, um, as you know, I live out in Echo Valley, and there's a, uh, it's my issue, there's a, uh, light pole out there on whatever that Echo Valley is, it's on really kind of between my backyard and the dam, and it's the only light pole on that street, other than up by, um, I think Dyer's House. And so, as it's getting darker, you know, I wouldn't mind seeing it turned off at some point, so that, you know, I actually have a nice view, cause I actually, you know, do enjoy that view of the dam and things out there. But if that's not an option, I also recommend that you just light up the whole street and, and throw up light poles out there, so that you could actually use it for a walking path, so. Um, a couple options there, you know, I'd like to see that. I mean, if it's gonna bother my view, I'd rather have it for a purpose and not just out there, so, otherwise you can just tell me why it's out there, out in the middle of nowhere, cause it looks kinda weird.
Okay, well, we'll investigate that, I think I've heard the reason that it's there, but, but maybe Garrett knows, or John? Okay?
Will there be new lights going up with every house, or?
There's no house there, oh.
No, it's not.
Just looking at engineers drew up.
Why, why don't they let him on the whole row, so, instead of just one random light?
Engineering question.
Look good on paper.
But I love
Get back to me.
I love your idea about a walking path, how do you feel about a biking path?
Either, I mean, just
We have some people
That was not being used right now, so, I mean, if you actually let it, people would use it for either biking, biking, walking, whatever, I mean, you don't have any
Well, at some point, a real life biking pack, path, that's been, that's Well, at some point, a real life biking pack, path, that's been come, that's come to me. Okay, so we'll find out why that light is out there, whether it can be on or off, or whether we put a whole bit tomorrow in. Okay, that's a question? Alright, thank you, Gordon. Appreciate that. Okay, any other public question, comments? Okay, that brings us to.
Will provide your poles of ice free. Day in the trench to put the, put the light, uh, excuse me, the power source in.
The lights for who?
If the town is seeking, they should put more poles of lights along that path. West River Electric will provide those in free. It was half for me as developer.
But they have to be billed somebody.
The, the onboard use of them, yes. Electric they use, yes.
So those are just added to our electric.
Our electric bill.
Right, the cities. Because we get charged for every light in town.
Okay.
Based on.
Okay, okay, good to know. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, that brings us to permits. Um, the first one in front of us is for Matthew Anderson. This is a, a concrete slab. Um, so I think it's a basketball court and he's got, he's got a whole basketball team right there, so. Any questions or concerns? There's a drawing on the back. It's fifty-five by forty-six. Would I have a motion to approve this permit, or is there any? Um, Garrett, have you gone out and looked at any of this or?
Yes, yep.
And what's your feedback?
It's good. Beats all the setbacks.
Okay, so it meets the setbacks?
Move to approve.
Okay, it's been moved? Zach seconded. Any other questions? All those in favor say aye. Oppose, motion carries. The next item is a sixty by eighty detached garage. At fifteen Concho. Is either Lori or Brennan here? Or maybe you know, where exactly is this uh, sixty by eighty building at, going to go in at? Is it? Is it next to their house? Is it up on the flat? Is it down the hill?
I did notice that there was an approach built off the cul-de-sac down there, so maybe it's going.
So it's like between their, I saw, I thought I saw materials between their house and.
Be to the east of Brennan and Laurie's then?
West.
West, on the west side, I'm guessing. Yeah, I don't know where.
So they're locked, it's pretty large.
Right, it's huge. So that's, I guess, what I was thinking if it was down the hill. Does it matter if?
I can go and talk to him again. Get the exact location and make sure that everything's good.
Okay, so do we wanna?
City lawyer working for one version in the shop, I'm sorry. Yeah, I, I. Moved to approve that with Garrett checking, just to make sure where it's.
The setbacks and stuff, right? Okay. Okay, so it's been moved and seconded to approve this building permit based on the conditions that. Uh, Garrett checks the setbacks, okay? So please make note of that in the minutes. And then Mike Anderson. I'm so excited to get to mine. All in favor of Brennan and Laurie's with the conditions? Oppose, motion carries. Now we get to Mike's. Okay, this is for a. Building. And it's got a very nice drawing that goes with that. It's. So. Where is this located on your lot then?
So it would be on the north. Uh, it'd be, so I got the fence that goes around the residence and it would be just north of that. In that, um, just under one and three-quarter acre lot that we have behind the house.
Okay.
Uh, the doors, it's kind of confusing, because when I brought this in, I showed Carolyn like what directions it was gonna be facing and on the. Don't pay attention to my drawing. Uh, if you go down and it shows the building, um, it, I did label it. Because it gives two different views. It gives like, uh, what would be like the north view and the south view. So I just labeled it how it's gonna be on that lot. So the big garage doors will actually be facing south towards the house. There'll be no doors going to the north.
Okay. Because your, your lot runs, does it run up the hill also? Or where does your lot line? Where is your lot line?
To the west or the east.
To the west.
To the west.
Of where this building's gonna be.
To the west? If, I guess I would have some property there and then the city has the alley that technically goes behind like the beers. So it goes up and over that hill.
So your land runs to the top of the hill?
No, it runs to the alleyway, which, yes, technically the top of the hill, but nothing onto the flat.
So the little building there that Norbit built.
It's on my property.
Yours.
No, not mine. On my property. But I've never said anything, because I don't want to stain it or anything, so. But I could fill it.
So it is on your property. I, I was just trying to figure out where that lot line is.
Yep, so, and then technically, uh, we go to the north to the Beers' fence. Which would be the northeast corner.
Yeah.
It goes straight east and goes over and there's a stake over there and then it runs. Kind of diagonal over to the back of Stangles. Northeast corner there.
So definitely within status side, sir.
And I did throw stakes up back there if you want to just check it out, because I want to make sure I'm not by any utilities or anything like that, or.
We'll get it tomorrow.
And I want to be far enough away from.
Do I have a motion to approve this building permit then? Second? Okay, moved and seconded. Any other question? And Mike i- is, as he indicated before, abstaining. All those in favor say aye. Oppose, motion carries. Okay. We are, Superintendent reporter, are you still awake over there, Sally? No, I, I noticed you, you were going down.
I'm glad to be back, though. And I was gonna invite everybody to our welcome back picnic, but since they all left, I'm gonna invite who's here. We're excited, yeah, I've been taking a break, not taking a break, but not coming to this over the summer, but I am back. With full force. Um, we start professional development with our teachers next, uh. I guess, end of the month. Next week, I've got new teachers coming back for an orientation, so we got, I think, four new teachers and our new assistant principal. Um, it's fun, the teachers are just starting to come back, working their rooms. I feel like my family's back. Uh, coming home, I should say. But on the twenty-sixth, Monday night, at five o'clock, I, I invite the community, we're having a welcome back picnic. For the whole community, um, I'm gonna introduce our whole staff. Uh, at five thirty and just share a little bit about school this year. And then anybody, all the kids that want to and their parents can move into the buildings and meet their teachers and take their stuff to their rooms. Um, so that's what we're doing there.
I'm sorry, what day was it?
Monday, the twenty-sixth.
Thank you.
Our C T E building, or not building, addition, it's coming along. We are planning, um, ribbon cutting. During homecoming week, which is October seventh through the eleventh. At some point in there, I just don't know where yet. As you probably read in the papers, we got a two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar grant to buy equipment. And so that's trying to come and we're holding off the shipping because we're, they were behind. We knew that, but um. It was a fast turnaround with that equipment and so. We're trying to stuff it in every, which way we can to, to just house it when it gets here. Um, a couple of things I do have that involves you guys is. I am really beefing up our internship program. Uh, I'm, I was unhappy with what I saw, there's, I'm just gonna be honest. There's a lot of beefing up I'm trying to do around the school. And one is with our internship. So my assistant and or I, um. Are working on building that internship. I want these kids to explore different careers. Research, do some things looking beyond, uh, what they think they're interested in. Because half the time, our kids don't know much beyond their backyard or their fathers or mothers and so, um. You may get contacted, you may already have been today, asking, hey, uh, would you want to come speak to our internship? I'm gonna have speakers for the first three weeks of class, all different careers. Um, come, come tell us about what you do. And so I strategically pick people in our community, people outside our community. Professionals, um, I say professionals. Doctors and attorneys, as well as plumbers and electricians and some of. Things that need two-year degrees, things that need apprenticeship, just all over the board trying to. Um, also, if, if you know, if you're a business that would take an intern, I've also got those on two. Uh, hour blocks this year to give our kids a little more time to get to their intern area, work. A chunk of time and come back. That gives them a little more time for places that might be further than just the wall area. I'll be reaching out to some of you maybe too, if a kid wants to work in a specific area. The other thing is the powerhouse. Um, we had a complaint, we watched on the cameras. We see that there are people not going in after ten o'clock. But there, it, there is action. It closes at ten, it shuts off, it locks at ten o'clock. But I can always go in there before ten o'clock, open the door for anybody else and have my party all night long. We saw on the cameras, there were people there at one-thirty to two o'clock in the morning. If you have a business where your employees are using that, I just would ask you to. Remind them that they're supposed to be out of there by ten or shortly after, it's not a party house. I'm concerned about some liability things going on. Um. So anyway, I'm just coming to you with that request at this point. I'm not saying any more than that as far as repercussions. Because I hope that just nips it in, but.
You've made deputies aware of this, that you want, are there lights on after ten o'clock? At two o'clock in the morning, is there lights?
Well, what we're seeing are the doors are, what we're seeing, we don't have cameras inside, we're seeing cameras. The camera, what I saw was outside and we watched, the door was stacked open. And people are complaining that there's music and there's stuff coming from inside.
Okay.
Was I there? Absolutely not. Um, and so, yeah, there's a lot of things we've got to do with that powerhouse. But, um, we have locked, we have shut it off, but locks, but you can't control people from jamming doors.
Yeah, I've noticed like the south doors have been open too.
And then we, we sit here, uh, we, we did lock a door to go up. I mean, that to me, as a young person, that would have been a great place. There's that, you could go through the, um, locker room and up. We padlocked that, but then we also got asked, well, is that a fire escape? And we shouldn't be padlocking. What we gotta do, I mean, I don't want some drunks out hanging out over the edge up there. So we're just kind of trying to figure out how to make it work. We don't want it, we want it available, we want this to work. And so I thought you were, you guys might be my first step to just get the word out that. If we've got people that we know of that are doing things, or keep your eyes open.
Well, I know in, in years past, like cardholders, like, like whoever's. Uh, you guys can go on there and see who's activated that door switch.
We can.
So if you're in there and you're a card.
The last one, I think we can, you know, that system. Do we keep it off? The main school, we have updated a lot. I'm not sure, I'm not the type of person, so don't ask me.
Because they would, they would threaten to pull the card, the family card.
That's where we're gonna go next. That's why I'm saying is, I don't want to go there, but that's gonna be the next step.
Well, to keep something from happening, you might have to, you know, um. Because it, I remember there were people that lost their cards for like thirty days and had to go to doctor's chum. Because doors were propped open and left open all night. Nobody had been in there, but the door, they found the door propped, so. And it seemed to fix the problem when people's guards started getting shut off for a month, yeah, so.
Kim and I was one of the first workers at the powerhouse when we first started it. And then we had to lock it up, because we worked for the school. We'd lock it up, but then the cardholders could come in. It didn't turn into an issue. Because the colored holder would be there, but we were told, no, you had to like push them out. Then they had to use their own card to open it up. It, that was a little hassle, caused us some grief and.
And that, there's a lot of things we can do, um, but we also got to look at costs of management and time and. Some of that stuff too, so.
It's a very nice place for people to go to. It sure would be bad if you had to shut it up because of few, few people would break the rules.
Kudos to you too. I talked to, um. R C S guy that was at Wall Building Center, he said they've had eighteen to twenty workers a day down here. Trying to get your building finished. It's like, I'll steam ahead, but I thanked him because those. Guys, those eighteen, twenty a day must be the ones that are making a difference in R B B tax, because it's up. And so, thank you.
I don't know, um, our superintendent out there is outstanding and I don't think somebody says he's there at six o'clock in the morning.
Yeah, they're there when I get.
Those, those guys are fun. I mean, they've been great to work with, so. I know they're frustrated, R C S is frustrated with some subcontract and some of that stuff, but. That's the way it works and so.
And that particular business told me, they have bought a lot of stuff in there from them.
Good.
To meet their needs, so thank, thank you for spending dollars in Wall.
Oh, yeah. Thank you, thank you for your support.
Thank you, Dr. Prouser.
Okay, Katie, chamber reporter.
Okay, so this meeting center report should be in their pocket for final for July and then what we got for August. And currently seems like it's a time of year for lots of meetings, employee meetings, um, we've got West River and Old West coming up. Which led to the idea that we needed to finish, uh, or to strip and refinish the floor in the hall, um.
Great idea.
So, yeah, I was completely clueless as to how big of a job that was gonna be. It had been quite a few years since it had been done and the more Garrett's kind of thought about it, it seems like the longer, it seems like. We're recalling that it's been, since it's been stripped and refinished. And then there's been lots of like restore, rebound stuff to, that's been added on top. So it turned into a huge amount of work, um, and I naively scheduled it during the time of year that, uh. Woodworks doesn't really have a lot of time to devote to a project like that, so. Uh, big thank you to Garrett and Trevor and Gary for all your hard work and great attitudes and. They're still speaking to me after it's all done, um.
You're still talking about these guys?
It, it looks great and, uh, it should make it a lot easier to clean after everything's over with, I think, and it looks, it looks really good, so. Um, and, let's see for chamber, our welcome bikers promotion, I think, went well. We gave out a pallet of bottled water down in front of Harley. Ran out toward the end, which, that's good, means we, we liked it, I don't know, anyways, um. And thank you to the fire department for letting us use ice out of the machine, um, and to Jim Kitterman, because he even, he was working down at Badlands Harley. And he was even going down there and getting. He was working down at Badlands Harley and he was even going down there and getting ice in the morning and filling up the tank for us, so. That was greatly appreciated. Um, I gave out about five hundred of the Rally Rush stickers that we had made up and. Uh, four hundred Rally Rush koozies that said Walt, not Dakota with the logo on them, so. A lot of people that I gave them out to and talked to, they thought those were pretty cool, so. Um, and I got lots of comments from visitors that I gave the. Promotional items to about how friendly everyone in Wall was and how much they enjoyed being here. So that was a lot of fun hearing, so. Um, now that things are getting quieted down, I'm working on the twenty twenty-five budget and that's been kind of my project right now, so. Um, our next chamber luncheon is Wednesday, September eleventh. We don't have one for August, we never do. And that will be here at the community center at noon. It was supposed to be Tuesday. Um, the blood drive is in there on Tuesday and I have dentist appointment that I stuck, scheduled a long time ago, but I forgot about, so. It was moved from the tenth to the eleventh, so just note that change and um. Uh, our next chamber board meeting is September sixth at seven AM here at the community center. Um. Also, the pool closed today, so that is closed for the year. And I think that is all that I have. Does anybody have any questions?
And overall, the pool went very well this year.
It did. I know. I'm fortunate that we had all those uh, uh, high school kids. Their sports are starting up and I think uh. Ava and Nora, they're getting back to school and. Well, all those kids would be on their own up there and I don't think we wanna do that, so. Actually, I mean, if we don't need some certification, I will gladly volunteer to go up there and sit at the pool next week, but. I don't think that's probably gonna apply either. And also, I hate to do that to you guys tonight, but I do need executive session, but I promise to make it really short and sweet, so.
Oh, okay.
Kinda, sorry, couldn't be surprised without them.
All right. So, that brings us then, num, item nineteen, Dawn. Thank you for your patience.
The things that I'm going to be mentioning tonight are things that our board doesn't know about yet. Our meeting is August twenty-eighth and all this stuff is. Has come to me this week, basically. First one, we did receive an application in and so we will be discussing that application for the. Position at our next board meeting. Uh, the other item, if you remember back, um, what happened in. June, I believe, we had a company called Quest Site Solutions that had come out and they had done a tour of our town. We had done some, I had done some stuff ahead of time. We provided them a sample RFI, which is a document that goes to. Businesses that are looking to find a home, basically. And so I gave them all this information. They come down and they spent a morning with us. We toured the town and they. Gave us a report. I received the report actually just yesterday. And, and so I, they gave me kind of a neat little summary that I thought I'd go over a few other little pieces from that report. Um, like I said, it will be presented to the board at our next meeting. But um, some of the stuff that they had said or suggested was install more signage around the industrial park. Leverage the site, the certified site information. We have a book, um, that's in the room there. Of all the stuff that was done and the test that was done to become a site, a certified site in the state. Such as, uh, like, um. Ground water, not groundwater, but uh dirt samples.
Endangered species.
Yeah, maybe, there's a whole list of those. And they suggested using some of that material in our marketing to have that out there. For developers to have access to, so they can see some of the results and to prove, you know, that we had went to the work of doing all of that. Um, identify unique selling points, you know, like the location of the airport, which I think was on there, but um. They, that was one of the suggestions. Develop attractive and inform, informative marketing materials. Consistent branding across site-specific and community materials, so that would probably mean a um. Working together with the chamber to kind of send out the same message, the same branding um for all this. Focus on um, the region, more, you know, we wanna look at the region, not just wall, is what that information was. Enhance online listings and expand places where information exists. Look, going, looking out at different commercial databases, and there's a list of them in here that I've never even heard of, and. They have looked, they didn't find our site on the South Dakota Office of Economic Development. And it should be on their site as a site certified, um, so we'll have to look into that and why they don't show us there. Uh, we develop messaging about walls growth, recommend putting together some statistics regarding public investment. New home construction increases in tax revenue, new building permits, et cetera, that can be used to support the idea that. Growth is happening in Wall for people who want to come here. Uh, cost per offer's proposition for prospects, which focus on property taxes, utility costs. Local incentives, stuff that's um, that maybe developers would want to know. Um, the workforce overview document about the workforce that's here. Broaden outreach efforts to more audiences, like we wanna target the state's economic development project managers. Regional commercial brokers, state agricultural representatives and small commercial developers. There's an opportu, they also mentioned in here, because of the draw, of all drug, there's also an opportunity to market to all the visitors to Waldrug each year. You never know who's passing through, is one of the comments. They had also. Um, on that RFI that I had mentioned that we would give prospective businesses that come in here, they did a report card. And there's several things that they had looked at, uh, such as. And I'm not gonna go through every one of these, it'll take a bit of time, but the topics and there, there, there's a grade level for each of them. There's kind of a grade level for overall. But organization and ease of reference, applicability, graphic content. Documentation, thoroughness, and the overall submission that the grade that they had given us was a C. And I'm assuming it's um on a normal ABC like uh we would all be used to. And one of the, the comments here, the RFI response addressed many of the RF, RFI prompts, but could be majorly enhanced. To better represent the site with new efforts. This was just a summary. Oh, here's a few recommendations. They want um, developed maps that are more professional, more information on them. That hit are more site-specific for each individual site, not the industrial park as a whole. So they want some more detailed information. Um, update more, more utility information. I'm assuming that like. We have the capacity to have so many KW worth of load out there, as an example from Western Electric side. So a first prospective business knows the capacity that's out there. Um, and. And then there's a whole, this is only uh six, seven page summary and there's a big other document that's thirty-seven pages long. That I had received, but just thought I'd let you know that we got some good suggestions and we will need to sit down and change our. Document that we give to our, 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 I, or if I can talk, RFI document that we give to prospective. Kind of do a revamp on that. And so if they were good suggestions, then we'll take their input way forward. Any questions?
Thank you. Thank you, Dawn. Okay, that next brings, oh, we did the ambulance report. Okay, so then that brings us to the South Dakota DOT maintenance and snow removal. Uh, agreements. Um, Rick and Stan and I and Garrett uh met with a gentleman. About drainage on the Shotten Boulevard. And so then there was lots of back and forth conversation and. And in your packet, it's clearly demonstrated that there was a maintenance agreement agreed in two thousand nine. There was a snow removal a month later. Then there was a school warning, um, sign agreement. And so I received this email back from a Todd Seaman. And he said, per our phone visit, the DOT will set up a meeting with you and your team to discuss the details. Of the three agreements. The goal is to combine them. And to uh make them into one updated document. So Mike, Mike Carlson was out of the office this week. He will be reaching out to me next week and try to set up a meeting time with Rick and Stan again and Garrett. Go over these, because if you looked at those maintenance agreements, there's a lot of stuff in there that doesn't pertain to us at all. And um, so we just are gonna try to get it down where it's a little bit more workable and readable, so. Where I was going to be concerned about trying to update, cuz the snow removal, it one expired. In twenty fifteen and they weren't even aware of that. And neither were we, and we had a tough time even finding these agreements also. So there's just gonna be some update and um, we will move forward from there. So that's what's going on there. That's all. That became a lot shorter incident than our situation than what I anticipated to begin with. Item number twenty-two is the Hola Plan.
So he did leave a note for me, Brent did, and he asked if. He said unfortunately, he has to leave at eight forty-five, which, I guess we pass that. Um, to get to rapid to film a military arrival at the airport at eleven tonight. Can remove item twenty-two for the next meeting.
Oh, okay. So we will table item twenty-two. All right. Thank you. So then, that brings us to the finance report. Carolyn.
Okay, yesterday I attended the, it's a committee that I sit on through the South municipal. Um, the taxation and revenue policy committee, and we just go over. Things that, to help give our director direction of what we want them to. Lobby for us when bills come up and they just kind of have that outline for them so that they know what the bill dealing with. However, we feel on sales tax, for example, they know what direction to take on that. And so that was a good meeting. Um, a lot of discussion that we had on that. Um, and I included in your packet and it's, I've been getting a lot of emails. Coming from the municipality when imposing I M twenty-eight that um, there was kind of some confusion about. Some, some towns have already passed the resolution. Others thought that it was illegal to do that, that we couldn't take a stance like that. Um, so there is a, an opinion from the attorney in there that I shared that we definitely can. So I did also share the resolution to see if you're willing to um. I could put that on next month agenda to, or next meeting agenda, sorry. Um, to pass that resolution. It would be published in paper and would just show people the support that we have. Because the discussion that was had, that I M twenty-eight, if it does pass, it's gonna be very detrimental to all the communities. We're already low on sales tax, we're seeing. It will take us down big time. So I haven't had the time to look at the percentage, but, and I can't remember where the one person was from. They were on a Zoom call. Um, twenty-five percent reduction in their sales tax if that goes passes.
South Dakota Retailers Association has come and Sarah's president-elect of that organization. They've come out strongly against it. I mean, it's just gonna be devastating.
Yes, but it does exempt municipalities.
Sorry?
It does exempt municipalities, so it applies to states, but not municipalities.
What, Stephanie, what does that mean?
So it, it, the two percent that um, the city potentially collects above the state amount. It doesn't affect that. Um. That two percent that the city still has the discretion to place on food products.
I know that was only if the state set, if they set it at zero, but if they do away with it completely, then the city is no longer able to set it at anything. It's only if they set it at zero.
Right.
But this bill is set, is taken in a way completely, way it's worth it, but it, but still not for city.
Yeah.
Pretty on top of that and they, they're having concern over it, so I guess.
I probably shouldn't speak up, but I know from my superintendent's conference, we had a huge meeting about, I think, we cut. Hundred and seventy-eight million dollars. The, the superintendents were haphazard deciding. Do we make a stand against it because of the poorly written bill?
Exactly. And that's the biggest concern, that it's, it's not specific enough to.
That's why they wanna close it, cuz it's written thoroughly and nobody really knows exactly, so. I, I guess we can assume that it exempts municipalities, but that's not how the municipality addressed it to us, so.
People need to be educated on just what it means when we go to vote.
Right. And probably relook at rewriting that, because there's just so, so much unclarity in there that. You know, if it does pass, people are like, well, i- is that what it means or is that what it means, you know?
Well, and, and just the fact, no tax on food, that sounds good. The impact, the whole, whole thing is no taxes, groceries.
What, does it affect like Dairy Queen? Would your tax go off? What about your cafe?
Prepared food. Tobacco products, cuz they're hitting human consumers.
Yeah.
Tobacco products?
Yes, and vapes and all that.
CBD, mouthwash, toothpaste, aspirin, marijuana.
And that's why it's poorly written.
Yeah, the marijuana shops would probably love that too, huh? Pretty bad.
So do we have time? Do we need this resolution uppassed tonight or do we look at it and pass it next time? What, what is your re- request?
I, I don't think, I mean, I would like to look at doing it next time.
Okay.
So that, because there's been so many emails coming through, I haven't had time to gather the information from all of them. To see what their comments are and I think it's. Official to hear all comments.
Right.
So, um, yeah.
So just.
I just wanna make you aware, give you an information on it and go from there, so.
And I would just add, Carolyn, the biggest concern that municipalities have had about passing a resolution. Is that a municipality cannot take political stance. But the um, legal opinion that was, was drafted for the municipality. Uh, clarifies that a municipality can disseminate information. On how this would affect the municipality.
Which I provided that all for them.
Yeah, and that's the attorney opinion that you already provided for us, okay?
Yep.
Just to be sure.
And then, um. The single audit agreement in cost, it's kind of something we can't not approve. And I'm not asking for approval, I just wanna make you aware. I do need to sign off on it. This is for the twenty twenty-three audit. Because we received over seven hundred and fifty thousand of federal funds due to the airport project. Um, it's automatic requirement that a single audit is done. So pray for me, this is the first time I've had a single audit and they're asking for some information that I'm not real clear on, but. The auditors are good, they work with me, but just know that it's my first time, so I hope I can give them all that they need. So that is gonna be the additional cost on top of what our normal lot of cost is, just so you learn that, so.
Do you need that passed tonight?
I, it's not of a thing that you need, I mean.
Okay.
It's, it's gotta be done.
Yeah, definitely.
That was all that I had.
Okay. Here, Public Works, you have been, as Carolyn and Katie have been very busy. But you have been very busy, you and your department.
Yeah, uh, I'll just start out talking about the, there's a light pole in the alley between uh, the salty steer. And one of Joe's rentals and people have. Trucks have been hitting it and then if they don't hit the pole, they hit his building. So we looked into getting it moved to a better location, you know, farther ways so trucks can make the turn. Uh, it'll involve moving underground, uh, wires, not, not a lot, but I got the price from. Bus River Electric for them to move it was uh, five thousand nine hundred dollars. All we wanted to. Move ahead and see if they could come up with the money to, in the land, or, I mean, it's.
Is Joe willing to work with you on that amount?
Yes. Uh, nine hundred.
Um. Could you? What are your thoughts? I'm thinking negotiate it, get it kind of figured out, what's Joe's gonna pay and what we're gonna pay? Because that's about six thousand, that'd be three thousand apiece if you split. Because that's about six thousand, that'd be three thousand a piece if you split it, or. Let, would, or you're against it?
Can't be splitting stuff. Yeah, because it's, I mean, and if. Somebody does hit it and it breaks, it'll probably fall right on his house.
So he has some skin in the game.
Right, yeah.
Big time.
And he's willing to work and put it, you know, closer on his property or. Or whatever to make it.
Okay.
So I can talk to him and see.
Oh, Don.
I do have one comment to keep in mind, the. The precedents that just were set, because there will be. There will be other people that would come knocking at your door, or want to do the same thing or a different.
And now that you mentioned that. It's on Joe's property, right? It's in the alley.
It's on the alley.
So is that on us? Oh, okay, then. Would there, there be any, I, I'm just trying to think, I'm not, I've been down that alley forever. There be any way of mountain something, it's, it's on the east side of the alley, isn't it?
Yes. Yeah, there's a big H frame and there's overhead going to. Two, two houses, I think.
There is any way of mountain, you know, some kind of light just on the side of the building, just don't know where with it. They probably could, but then they'd have to. You know. We could see what the cost would be to trench the, or to put the power in underground.
He might not lock the leg on his building, right?
Wait, yeah, we can ask some questions and see.
Would, would he let? Let us move the pole over on his property?
Yeah, and where we talked, it was just. There's a, I can't remember what the sign is, but it will be right by the sign, pretty close to the curb. Where this would be placed, so. I can just.
Okay. We'll put that on, under your report again for next meeting, okay?
Then Sanders, we're. Got a meeting set up with them for August twenty second, I think is.
Yeah.
Kind of get some stuff. Buttoned up and get the ball rolling, because they're still not in the transfer station, and. People aren't able to, you know, like contractors can't take stuff there to dump and.
Did Kiefer should get down here?
I haven't seen, I haven't contacted the end. But there's. What's that?
They'll have to.
Yeah, they don't, well, they might still have keys, we don't know about. Anyways, so there's two items left to fix there, and it sounded like they. Were gonna get it done, so. Anything on the recycle?
It's down there now, yes. It's not the one with the different doors, but they just have one six yard. They're gonna get signs far to say.
The partless west one?
Yeah, partless west one, yep.
But people asked me about that again today.
Yep. So get a little closer there. I noticed something today when they picked up the garbage on Stone Drive, that. Me and a couple other neighbors had a few extras on the side of the garbage cans, and they left it there on the road. So that's probably gonna be their new policy, so I just thought you guys should be aware.
Yeah, if it's not in the can, they won't pick it up.
Okay.
Um, we had another water leak up. On North Creighton. Uh, that. It's the, it's old transit pipe, and I think when somebody was filling the tender, they slammed the valve on the truck and it blew up the line again. So we need to. To budget next year to replace. From. Can't remember if it's the fire hydrant down there, or there's a valve down there. That there's some plastic pipe to there, so it would just have to be replaced from there to the main plant.
And is that something you would do, or we'd have to hire a contractor?
Probably would have to hire a contractor, because they'd have to blur underneath Creighton or. Dig it up.
Okay.
So.
Okay.
Start working on that. We talked about the Holler's Agreement, and I did get ahold of by two minutes, they're the. They're the contractors that were doing the chip seal and kind of tore up the road up by wall meet, and I talked to Chris. And he said they'll, they'll make stuff right, get ahold of me when they're done. All of those chips, I think they're done this week. And then, of course, Katie talked about the Grand Hall, got that done. In between fires and motorcycle wrecks and. Cool. Uh, this morning Trevor and I got up and we washed, watched all the sidewalks off on both sides of Main Street.
Sorry.
Hurricane, Hurricane Garrett blew my eye in the dark. But yeah, we washed everything down, I washed out the garbage cans along here. Um, we're gonna wait, we'll do over here by the Tesla, the library and stuff, once. Those guys get done down there, so we don't. Give them any more water than. Um, then we swept the streets, so, you know, we have quite a bit of stuff off, so.
Well, thank you, because after the bikers were here, the streets were.
That rain, that washed a lot of stuff into the road.
Yeah, it did.
And then all the people that parked in that lot during that rain.
Yeah.
I was like, are you kidding me?
Yeah, we cleaned that up too, there was a lot of dirt washed. And the owner of that lot talked to me and said that they're looking to put some gravel in there, so.
Is that Sunday?
Yeah. So.
Okay. Anything else?
I don't think so.
Okay, well, just thank you for everything you've done this last week. Okay, moving on to twenty five then, the mayor's report, and thank you Sally for sticking around here. Okay, I listened to the school board meeting, meetings, just so that I. I have an idea of what's going on over in that side of town, which is always marvelous stuff. I heard the school board talking about how they wanted to re renovate their circle drive that they have there. And that the trees that they had there felt like they had to go. And they want to redo the rock and the landscaping. But they would give trees away, give the trees away if they found somebody that would want them. Well, in conversation that we have had earlier, the street committee and myself and Dakota Mill. Uh, concerned about on the west side of the park, having some kind of a buffer there. Uh, for landscaping between that and the new fertilizer plant. So I approached the school board, or Sally, about would they consider to let us have. Um, the trees. She reached out to a landscaper who has a spade. That is big enough to move those, because N R C S here in Wall, their spade is not big enough to move those trees. So. Uh, the last I knew, did you get any feedback from the landscape attorney?
Well. So for this project, and I hope it works, we did get a quote from one. Somebody else, but all he was gonna be able to do is jerk them out, and he said, I can't save them. So the one that Marion and I thought about. At first he didn't think he'd have time, well, then we said if we waited till later, when you should be plant replanting trees anyway, he said, yes, he could. And he could probably replant them. And, um, but he told me he could not get me a bid. Until you wouldn't be able to get me a bid this week for our meeting or your meeting or whatever, so. That's kind of where we're sitting is waiting for him. To do that. I talked to him early on and he kind of said, no, you're wanting it done sooner, I don't, I can't get it all, I'm too busy. But he said October would be more ideal, so we decided, even though kids will be back, we could wait. I'm a believer in saving those, it kills me to kill a tree. So if you, if the city can use them, I would love to wait. And let them eat, they're plums, I picked a whole bunch last year, and they're all in my freezer, and. I see there's some toteries out there to pick, I didn't get any of those last year, birds have got most of them, but that's what they are. I'm gonna save the evergreen, because it's gonna be my Christmas lighting tree if I'm around long enough for it to grow up. But we gotta clear out, it's becoming a safety gill. Um, that loop, I guess they were planted by a class that you didn't get permission or. Something happened, I don't know, that's beyond me, but, or behind me, but. Anyway, yeah, when I came on, that's what they were talking about, is trying to get rid of those.
Okay, so Sally and I are kind of working on that, we'll let you know what that cost is, if it's. Something that's doable, we may move forward if we not, I guess we're just gonna have to tear them down.
We'll take what it takes to get them out of there.
Okay.
And then that's what I see, and then if you're wanting to go plant them, that's where you.
We would pick, we would move them from there to there, okay, all right.
We'd pay for them being reflected.
Yeah.
Well, that spade guy would do that, that guy, he would pick them up, take them over there, put them in, yeah.
No, I'm just saying, we would pay for him to do that.
We will take them out, we'll take them out, and he'll finish our project, and that's our responsibility, if you guys do the replanting part, we'll split it, I mean.
Basically.
Okay, so.
And if they die. Shoot.
Have them same students.
That'd be my fault.
Yeah, if they die, it's on Garrett.
I like feeling green.
Playing for a lot of it, no, yeah.
Thank you. Okay, next thing, airports, uh, steering committee, I've set up a meeting for that on Thursday, August twenty second, also at eight thirty. Someone has reached out to us, they're interested in building hangars to rent out, so. Uh, that's just amazing, and so that meeting will be on next Thursday. Uh. And then he already mentioned that Sanders is gonna meet with us also that day. And then just an update for those, I know you know this Dan, but yesterday the last governor's house showed up. And it's in place. It. Came too late for the people that wanted to buy it to begin with, and then the next people that wanted it, they are. Not qualified for it, they make too much money. So that house is available, brand new, sitting there, beautiful, the way those developers have. Uh, made that street look with those houses, it's, it's fantastic. Enhances a lot, our subdivision, they also have a stick built house. It is three bedrooms, uh, two bathrooms, oversized garage. Nicely priced, had people looking at it, but nobody showed up with money yet, but it won't last long. So out of six lot, or out of seven lots that were established there, two years ago, six of them are gone. The seventh lot has, is spoken for. So then, that brings us to Echo Valley, it's twenty four lots over there that our infrastructure dollars put in. Two of them are sold. Nine are waiting to close. And there's fourteen still for sale.
Wow, that's.
Those are going fast.
That's fantastic, on Echo Valley, I didn't know. That was that far down the road.
I just gathered up that information. And thank you Garrett, you didn't mention that you re, you renamed Echo Valley to. Wall Lake Road.
Wall Lake Road.
I had somebody say. What a kind of difference.
And then the cul-de-sac, one is Driver.
I don't remember, there's Driver and.
And the other one is like Golf Road Place or some darn thing.
Golf Club Place.
Yeah, Golf Place. Is the other, the, the county did not buy those first names that the developers turned in. So that's why there's different names out there, so no more Echo Valley Drive. It's Wall Lake Road.
I think we should have.
That's why it is Wall Lake.
Wall Lake.
Not Old Town Dam Road. Wall Lake Road.
I think they should have named it like. The other one, like Mass Circle or. Probably Drive.
So anyway. That's kind of, and so I forgot to ask Sally, does she have a place for all her new teachers to live? Oh, thank goodness, all right. Okay, so then, uh, that brings us to item twenty six, items for discussion, no action would be taken, does anyone have? Any items for discussion? And then Katie, you mentioned executive session.
I'll make it short.
Okay, and the section that. Is it, does she?
What's that?
What does it relate?
Uh, first of all.
Okay. Do you know which one I'm going for? You've got it right there for.
I do, I have it. Well, maybe some, oh, I have some looking on the wall for inside.
It's tricky.
Is it, are we talking expulsion, suspension, okay. Qualifications, I think it's, I don't know. Is it one?
Okay, okay, that's a motion he made, is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, okay, we will go into executive session then.
I'm going to need it.
I don't. But thank you. Yes, be careful driving back.
Thank you.
That deer time of year again.
Yeah. Ditches are still green, they're moving into them.
Yeah, they love munching on that, so. I wonder, this would fit in this category, would you like to stay? Because I think they need to be.
You can price stay for those too, because this is cool stuff, so I really wanted to try to convince you guys that.
Mine's quit.
It quit?
I think Carolyn anticipated that.